The agenda to the school district website through mine text messages, social media. It's okay, that's new. Call me off guard there. All right, if everybody could please silence their phones and stand for the pledge of allegiance. I'm going to share the screen, the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, individual with liberty. Rashawn, if you could do the roll call, please.
Mrs. Albanese.
Present.
Mrs. De Jesus.
Present.
Mr. Lee.
He said he'll be running late, so he should be here soon.
Mrs. Melman.
Present.
Mr. Park.
Present.
Mrs. Racko. Mr. Robbins.
Present.
Mrs. Thompson.
Present.
Mrs. Wilds.
Present.
Also present, Dr. Ed Bertolini, myself Rashawn, Science School Business Administrator, Vic Lapira, our General Counsel and Board Attorney. So ends your roll call, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Rashawn. All right, so we will go ahead and get started. Dan said he'll be signing on in just a second, so he should be joining us shortly. So we have a lot of members joining us tonight, and thank you to the applicants for submitting, tossing your hat into the arena to get questions. So we will just go ahead and get started. I just want to explain to the public exactly how we'll be doing this. So the members who you see who have their cameras on are the applicants who have applied for the vacancy to be on the Board of Education. So what will happen is we are going to interview the candidates in the public session. And then later on tonight, we're going to go into closed session and discuss the applicants. They've submitted to us essays answering six questions, and thank you all for that submission. And they've all submitted to us resumes and cover letters that the board has had an opportunity to review. With that being said, we will start tonight's forum. One second. Okay, we will be asking questions in a round robin order. We'll start off, Dame, Jordan, Michael, Sebastian, Joe, and Wendy. So we're going to ask that you each do a one-minute introduction, and we'll start with Dame. So Dame, whenever you're ready.
Yeah, sure. My name is Tommy Troy. I am a full-time working mom with two kids, two sons in ACS. And my family came back to Leonia back in 2012. I graduated from Leonia High School many, many years ago. And I was away for a while, and I got married, got my first kid, and then we started looking for a house in Leonia. I just couldn't think of any better town to raise my own family, so we finally did in 2012. I am I am an engineer. I am P. Licensed Engineer, Certified Energy Manager. And what else do I have to tell you? Yeah, that's pretty much it, really. Yeah, my kids are in their fourth and second grade, both boys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will let all the applicants know when there's 10 seconds. It seems that people are having a difficult time getting on for some reason, but I will let Usman know. But there is members of the public here, so. All right, next person we'll go to is Jordan. So if you have one minute, please.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education. My name is Jordan Ziegler, and I am a current 12th grade student at Bergen County Technical High School in Teeterboro, New Jersey. I've lived in Leonia for all my life. I attended Annecy Scott School, Leonia Middle School, and I went to Bergen County Technical High School for high school. And I'm here tonight because I want to help my community, and I think I can offer a unique perspective to the board as a student who's experienced both the Leonia School District and a different school district where there's a little bit of a different approach, that there's some things that I like, there's some things that I don't like, and I want to help bring some of those ideas to Leonia School District and help our students succeed further. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, the next person is Michael. You have one minute, please.
Thank you. Michael Herzig, and thank you again for the opportunity to to present for this. I moved to Leonia in 2013, proud parent of three kids in Annecy Scott. We have a daughter in fifth grade and sons in third and first grade. My background is in business, started a few different companies. The most recent one was called Locust Energy, which worked in solar energy data, and so I'm interested in joining the board because obviously a very vested interest in the schools in Leonia, and I think that my business and financial perspective could be useful to the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next we have Sebastian.
First and foremost, I would like to thank President Robbins and the members of the Board of Education, and also Dr. Bertolini for allowing me the opportunity to do this interview. My name is Sebastian Milla Lopez, and I have been calling Leonia my home since 2013. I am of Colombian descent, and I am currently a senior at Leonia High School. And for the past three weeks, I have worked as an assistant manager at the East Town Over Diner near Morristown, New Jersey. And I believe I can bring a young, fresh perspective to the Board of Education.
Okay, thank you very much. And after that, Joe.
Hi, Bryce, and the board. Thank you for this opportunity to be nominated for this position. I have lived in Leonia for three years with my wife and two daughters. One's in ACS and one will be going to ACS next year. Since moving here, I've always wanted to be proactive role in my community. I've been a class parent for each grade, and I hope that continues. I've also coached AYSO soccer. My professional career, I'm an accountant for the last 15 years. I've worked for companies as big as Apple and startups like Shake Shack and others. I wanted to join this board to keep being proactive, keeping a voice for the community, keeping our teachers and our students safe through this pandemic, and also helping us get ready for the 21st century. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, Wendy.
Hi, my name is Wendy Lindsay, and I have, I've been living in Leonia since 2001. And my students, my children have been students in the Leonia Schools since about 2007 and 2006, 2007, the school year. And I would like to just offer my candidacy. I would love to help out in any way that I can. I've been a longtime participant in volunteering through the schools as in terms of Home and School Association. As a class parent, helping out with various kinds of committees that are involved with the schools. I'm very involved with wellness in the schools. I'm really interested in in understanding how we can help to create more inclusion and cultural awareness in our town. And I would like to to offer you my skills in researching, rolling up my sleeves, and getting to work.
Thank you very much. You were all under a minute, so that was great. All right, so we'll now move on to the first question. In order, we'll go Jordan, Michael, Sebastian, Joe, Wendy, Don. So question one. If appointed, what would you hope to be the key accomplishment of the board during your year, in your years in service? So, so Jordan, you may begin.
So if I were appointed to this position, my biggest goal and I think accomplishment for the board would be getting our students back on track in terms of learning, getting out of this pandemic and transitioning back to in-person learning, once it is safe and effective to do so. I believe that we cannot fully transition until all of our teachers have received vaccinations, and it's completely safe to return. I am currently a remote learner at my school because I do not fully feel safe returning to in-person learning at this time. And I think the board has time between now and September to figure out what we want to do to help our students get back on track. Because I believe that remote learning, although, you know, we've transitioned, we've worked hard, I think we have suffered learning losses for our children. And I think to transition back to in-person learning would be really helpful for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Michael.
Yes, so I very much agree with Jordan. I mean, given the past year of the pandemic, getting students back into school, understanding which students were most impacted by the past year, and making sure that folks who need extra help are given that help to catch up, reintegrate into the school year, make sure that we understand if folks have had very different experiences over the past year, that they're able to get the same sort of benefits that the kids who've done the hybrid model or other models are able to get. But I think it's definitely getting everybody back into the groove is one of the key focuses of the board over the next year. Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't mean to be muted there. Thank you. Next is Sebastian.
Yeah, I fully agree with Jordan. With the state of pandemic, we definitely need to get back on track for students, for the staff, for the faculty, and everyone. But I also believe that there are, like, as a member, I would like to focus on a specific issue, which is the school's district, the district's spirit and integration with all students. Usually, students feel like the system's against them or whatnot. And I believe the school has a role to just give them a platform to rise up. They really need to just need help, a helping hand, I would say.
Thank you very much. Next is Joe.
Yes, thank you, Bryce. So like the other applicant said, number one priority is keeping our students and teachers safe. One of the things that I'm most proud about is probably last week, I was successful in facilitating a group of volunteers along with the approval of John Sassy, the union president of our team. The ability to find vaccine appointments for these teachers that are eligible and have been struggling. And we've already successfully found that. And I've, in order to get back in September or whenever to re-enter, our teachers that need it or want it, they need the vaccine, and that's what I'm helping them with. And anything else that's needed, whether it's technology or testing to get them up to speed, I'm here to roll up my sleeves and get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. All right, next is Wendy.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not me. Good. Well, let's see, in in terms of the things that I would hope to accomplish being on the board, I would hope to, of course, lend my skills in in helping out wherever possible. But in particular, as all of the other candidates have said, really getting us back to school, I think it's important for the students to be there. There are so many issues that arise when students are not in schools. I would aim to do that safely as, you know, following the 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 science, following the district restarts committee's advice and the medical advice, trying to find ways to do that as effectively and quickly as possible. And also looking into, you know, making sure that the air filtration, the air quality is up to date, thinking ahead to things like how are we going to plan lunch next next year and things like that. In addition, I would hope to, as a board member, participate in getting the word out about what the board does and the kinds of projects that the board is working on, because sometimes the public seems to know these things a bit too late. Also, I would like to help out with strategic planning. I know that the high school may entail, may need an expansion in the future. I would like to lend my services for that, any kind of demographic studies that would be needed as well. And then finally, of course, my age-old question of can we please improve school lunch? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to have to be very strict on the one minute, so if I interrupt you, I apologize in advance. Not a rude person, but I'll give you 10 seconds, and then I'll just voice in, but thank you. Okay, Tommy, you're up.
Yeah, sure. I think we're all saying the same things. Our focus is definitely on the entry. As we plan for the re-entry already, I think it is maybe board already started planning for it, but it is important to have the assessments set up for the academic assessment as well as like social and emotional assessment for the kids. I think this will entail, like, you know, making sure the resources are there. And if we end up finding some shortcomings, and then how do we help the students and the families to close that gap? So I think it's never too early to think through those processes and plan for the resources now so that, you know, when we need them, we have them available. And also, I would love to see that plan to include all the stakeholders in it, definitely our teachers and staff, and see if they need any additional resources or help so that we can plan forward, plan ahead. I think those are the things that I would love to focus on.
Thank you very much. All right, question number two, and we're going to start with Michael this time. How would you handle a question or concern from a member of the public regarding board or school district issues?
So any specific kind of issue or any issue?
If somebody comes up, just to qualify, if someone comes up to Wood Park and says, what is the board's stance on X, Y, and Z? How is the school district going to handle X, Y, or Z? What would your response be?
Okay, so now, good question. My response would be, I mean, the board, as far as I understand it, is a group which operates in the public domain. So if the information is public, I can absolutely give the information that's already public, that's been shared in the meeting. If there's information that's private that I'm not able to share, obviously, I would not share it. I think that, you know, from observing some of the board meetings, the structure and the the approach to it seems well routinized. And so that basically, I think that would be very helpful in answering any of these questions, because either it's in the public domain or if it's private, it's something which they'd be welcome to join a board meeting and learn about for themselves and ask in the public domain.
Thank you very much. Next will be Sebastian.
Like Michael said, I wouldn't really, I'd bring these questions or issues up to the board. I wouldn't give my personal perspective as it's, it may be different from what the board generally thinks overall. And of course, it just depends on what sort of question is being asked.
Thank you. Next is Joe.
Yeah, so if a member of the community came to me with this public information, I would point them to where they could find that. Like when I worked at Apple, we were always told, look at the press release. We cannot just make up another, you know, a story, because there's PR and there's people behind the same message. So if that, the public didn't know about the answer, I would tell them, bring it up in a session where all of the board members can address it together collectively.
Thanks very much. Next is Wendy.
Hi, if a member of the public were to come to me with a question regarding board matters, I would first and foremost try to be approachable. I would like to be friendly and welcoming and approachable and also informative. Anything that was, you know, publicly available that I could state publicly, I would be happy to inform them about that. I would also advise them to go to Board of Education meetings. I've been going to Board of Ed meetings about 14 years now, and there have been times when I've been the only one in the room. There was a, there was a period when it was just me and Carol Carols. We were just the only ones who would come, and sometimes even just me. So it's, it's, you really should go to the meetings. I think that having this digital format really helps. And if we could have that as, I'm not sure if it's possible to continue that after the pandemic, but that might be a helpful thing as well to involve more people. And then, of course, to point people to places in the, on the website where they could find information. Thank you. I would also recommend that people could also speak to the president of the board as well.
Thank you. Giving me more work to do. No, I'm kidding.
It's all right.
No, I'm kidding. Tommy, you're up.
Again, we're saying all the same things again. So if, well, just to add a little more like details to it, like if the problem is something very specific to the family, to the student, then I would explain the protocol, like how to, you know, elevate the question, elevate the issue or concerns. If it's within the class, it starts with the the homeroom teacher, and it gets elevated, like, you know, just, I don't, I'm not sure. I don't think it is clear to, like, all the parents, so maybe take that opportunity as, you know, to let them know what is the proper way to elevate those issues and concerns. And if it's an issue that affects the the whole school district as a whole, and then I'll definitely like invite them to come to the meeting, raise that as an issue. And if it's something really urgent to me, it appears to be really something important and urgent, then I'll share with the board members as well. And and then if it's, that there's a language problem, and then I'll try to accommodate that person to be able to come to the meeting and, you know, be able to talk about the issues in the meeting. So I think, yeah, that's all I got.
Jordan.
So if a constituent were to come with me, come to me with a question, I think this has a relatively simple answer. If it's something that's been debated already, and there's public information on the board website, I'd provide the public information that is available to that constituent. And if it's something that hasn't been debated, I'd take it and, of course, come to the next board meeting, bring it up on the new business or something along those lines. But I'd make it abundantly clear that if I was providing an answer, that I was providing something that is not on behalf of the entire board, because I've not met with them on that issue. And I would refer them to any public information that's available.
Thank you very much. All right, we've arrived at our first follow-up question from board members. So if board members have a follow-up question on these, on this subject of the role of the board, they can ask it. Or if we have time at the end, so there's going to be a follow-up question per section, but if not, they can save the follow-ups for the end. Just got to run it like a like a German train tonight. We have a lot of, we have a lot of stuff tonight, so.
I have a quick question, Bryce.
Yes, Mary.
Right, so a few of you have mentioned in your essays that you wanted to be on the Community Relations Committee. And I don't know if I should be worried or flattered, because I'm the chair of that committee, but I want to thank communicate between the, you know, the communication between the district and all the stakeholders of utmost importance, that includes Leonia and Edgewater. So please tell me your opinions quickly about the use of social media as a board member.
Right, and we're going to go in the order, we're going to start with Sebastian. So Sebastian.
I think social media should be used to help students overall just adjust to their new surroundings. If a student were to move schools or whatnot, they've had, pretty much have a difficult time. From my personal experience, I've known many people who never really could fit into Leonia. You have to start from a very young age, whether that's in El, the middle school, or ACS. And I believe that social media could create a bondage that can last a lifetime. And these bondages could be really essential to help us thrive as a community.
Okay, thank you. Next is Joe.
Yeah, so I've been, I forgot to mention, I've been a treasurer of a board in condo, a condo board in Palisades Park. So I know what communication is needed. It's very important. I knocked on every door of our 92-unit condo building and talked to them directly. I wish I could do that in Leonia. Maybe one day down the road I'll do that. With social media, it's very important to get out information as far as like when board meetings are there, are available, agendas are available, but it's really not for sharing opinions. Sharing opinions and thoughts is a meeting like this. But it's a place to find references and information about things that are happening in the community, and it's definitely needed, but not to share opinions.
Thank you very much, Joe. Next is Wendy.
Hi, for social media as a board member, I feel that the use of social media as a board member for, may, may have some ethical quandaries. It's not a good idea to to put out one's personal opinions in a way that might seem like it's speaking on behalf of the board. So I think that anything that is coming representing the board should be very clear that it's representing the board coming from the appropriate channels. For example, in the president, the board president's update, for example, other than just letting people know what time meetings are. I think that any kind of social media posting should be done in in an official manner.
Thank you very much. All right, next is Tommy.
Social media, to me, that's mandatory kind of platform, like tool that BOE has. Like, I really, you know, appreciated the the point that Joe brought up. To me, communication is beyond just, you know, putting up the announcement and, you know, just posting when the meetings are. But without that, I think we're losing basis. So it is like, you know, good foundation, like basic mandatory tool that BOE has in terms of, you know, communication and community relations. You guys are doing, we are doing great right now. Whenever I need a quick link to a meeting or to register, I like this, I I go to Facebook, like whatever platform that is, like easiest access to me. So it is to me, it is not everything. That's what I'm trying to like emphasize here, I think. But it is like basic mandatory tool that works very well for getting important announcement information out to the community. Thank you.
Okay, Jordan.
So as a board member, I think I have a two-pronged answer to this question. First of all, as an individual, I would never post about board policy on my personal accounts, because it would show something that I'm, I don't want to create an appearance of impropriety at all. And if someone has a question about board policy, I'd refer them to the board's social media. I feel like a good use of personal social media as a board member is to reshare those resources posted by President Robbins, the Board of Education, Facebook and Instagram pages. Those are the sources of information that the public is going to want to get. And I don't think that board members should be putting out their personal opinions on, let's say, the Leonia Talks listserv all the time.
So I may be showing my age a little bit here, but like Jordan, I would never post, because I'm actually not on social media. So, but the, to answer the question seriously, I agree with several of the other applicants in that I think that it's a very important tool, and it sounds like it's currently being used well. And, you know, having the official channel versus a personal channel, I think is a very, very important distinction. But yes, on a personal level, and not really on social media, so definitely we'd keep things off of that.
Great, thank you all. So that concludes our first round of questions. We'll move on to our education topic. So the first question, and it's going to go to Joe. Our first question is, what do you see as the role of technology in education? So one minute, Joe.
The role of technology is extremely important. As we all know, computers and coding is taking jobs from people. So we have to teach our students and our staff to be comfortable with technology, embrace technology, and grow with it. And we have to give them the tools and the latest technology. I love the joke when Bryce said he walked into ACS and saw a computer from when he was in school. That just can't happen. So technology is so important, and everything's in the cloud, everything is on the internet. A lot of people are going to go back to work in a hybrid method. We need the the systems in place, and we need the technology in the hands of our students and teachers that work correctly. Thank you.
Thank you. And Joe, the sad thing is it wasn't a joke. All right, next up is Wendy.
I am an anthropologist. I study how humans behave. And one of the things that's interesting in anthropology is to see how people use technology. In, as humans, we adapt to our environment, and our use of technology is a way of adapting to our environment and adapting our environment to us. And so it's a really important tool to be able to use. I understand from a sort of a health and wellness perspective and a parental perspective that sometimes there's too much screen time for kids. And so we have to be able to balance, how do you use this tool effectively to help people, to help students? And so we have to be able to balance, how do you use this tool effectively to help people, to help students explore the world and really understand. Um what's out there and to find ways to create projects, to do um really innovative kinds of learning, of project based learning, student centered learning. Um we need to have the technology that allows for that, um but be able to integrate it into classrooms. Where there is also a lot of human communication going on and critical thinking skills involved, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um next is Dami.
Um technology, so pandemic was like nobody expected it, anticipated it, so it was a very special case. Um and it forced us to upgrade our tech. Kinda I I T infrastructure uh to today standard, I guess. But there are a lot of questions related to like how much screen time is enough and too much, um I think that question is really valid question. Especially for um like younger grades, um so I I think it really. We, I I rely on uh the teachers, um director of curriculum, those, you know, teaching. Uh experts uh to determine what is in, what is appropriate amount of. Screen related um like, you know, time. And then uh I think that is the driver to tell us um what, how much uh. The upgrades or what kind of technology resources we need to provide. Um I I think, you know, in in terms of this, I think I I would definitely include teachers and, you know, those staff to figure that out.
Thank you very much. Um Jordan.
Uh I think the technology plays an extremely important role in education, as Dami said before, none of us expected the pandemic to like. And it changed the way we educate in general, I mean, I feel like I'm constantly stuck to my computer because I'm an all remote learner. And I feel like that's probably not a good thing, and as Wendy said, there needs to be that balance. In terms of writing things or working with papers and then working on the computer. And I believe that technology needs to play an important role in the classroom because, as Joe said, the world is changing. We're going more online, our students need to be able to learn how to succeed in the online environment. But they still need to learn some of those soft skills that are done off of the computer. And it's not, I wanna touch on Dami's point as well, we cannot succeed technologically unless our infrastructure is updated.
Thank you very much. Um next is Michael.
Hi, um so I I look at technology in in two ways, and and I have a tech background. I started a long time ago an internet company, um Locust Energy was a software company, so we had a lot of developers and it's. Uh technology is, as I said, it's looking at in two ways, it's a tool that you use, and it's also a tool that you teach. So I think uh other applicants have made some very good points in terms of, this has to be something which is in balance with. Um other tools that the students will leave the school system with, such as interpersonal skills. Uh and analytical skills, all of those things I think are very, very important, um but when we get out into the workplace. Um technology is something that should be in the arsenal of uh of of the kids who graduate from Leonia schools. Um so I I look at it really in those, in both of those ways.
Great, thank you very much. And then, uh last on this question is Sebastian.
Technology really is the way forward, I can speak on, based on my own experience, just prior to the pandemic starting, I remember. I'm not gonna obviously name any names for, you know, privacy reasons, but a teacher I had basically whopped out a phone book. And she didn't know how to use a smartboard, even one time she accidentally used the expo marker on the smartboard. So we definitely need to be more innovative as we go forward. And also, of course, we have to be careful of all of the negatives that come with technology, like Jamie said, health wise. That might, we need to be sure that it's completely safe to use, and yet.
Okay, thank you. Um I believe everybody, I mean, yeah, trusting the system, I think everybody won. Um so now we'll move on to our second question in education, what are the, sorry, excuse me. What area of learning would you want the Board of Education to increase its focus on? We are going to start with Wendy.
Well, following on that last question, um technology would be one of them. Um I myself have been, have come, as those of you who know me, will will attest. I have come in some ways kicking and screaming into this technology age, but I think that it's really important that people know how to use it and. And be able to use technology as a as really in, really powerful tools to be able to get things done. Um so um learning about technology and how to, how to use that is very important, but also I would really. Going back to my thing about, you know, we are humans and um the idea of bringing out this idea of the humanities, how can we learn about. What it means to be human and the kinds of challenges that face us, whether it's understanding ideas about um. Race or gender or ethnicity um or uh social class, things that affect a lot of people, whether it's uh how we. How we see ourselves in the environment um in our current, in our current world, these are all big questions that I think that um. That that students should all face and should all have perspectives on and be given the tools to um. To to follow through with in terms of of studying them, acting on them and um. And communicating about them as they go forward.
Thank you very much. Alright, uh next, Dami.
Um one area uh that I can think of is diversity and inclusion. Um I know uh we have a subcommittee on that, and we are already making very meaningful progresses in there, which is fantastic. We have great members there, um it's definitely one area that we we can, we we should start looking into. How to blend it into the the existing curriculum, um. I I also know uh that, you know, BOE superintendent al- already started working on that. Uh revise the curriculum for the history music classes uh in high school, I heard that, which is fantastic. I think we should just, you know, go in that direction steadfast and um teach the kids, just like Wendy said. Um those, you know, be able to embrace each other, uh you know, with how, no matter how the differences. Um I I think that is, you know, very important, and it it has to be built into the curriculum as soon as possible.
Thank you. Uh Jordan.
Uh I also wanna touch on what Dami and Wendy were saying with uh diversity inclusion, I wrote this in my applicant essay question, in fact, I wanna focus a lot. I think the board needs to focus on racial issues in general, because I think our students are constantly grappling with the question, how did we get to systemic racism in this country? And I think our history curriculum needs to include some of the issues that got us here, redlining, gerrymandering, racist housing policies. These things led to the inequity that we have in our country today, and our students need to learn about it. So that it doesn't happen again, Leonia has its own history with racist housing policies, and most students don't even know about it. And I think that's a real problem, because I feel like we're living in our own little bubble here, Leonia and Edgewater, because we are a diverse community, we are, we are very inclusive. But we need to learn about a time where it wasn't, so that we never go back to that again.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh Michael.
So um to answer the question of uh what area of learning do I think the Board of Education should focus on? Um when I, when you first said this question, I was thinking life skills, um and really, what does that mean? Um and for me, I I know we talked a lot before about technology, and I think that when people are looking for a job now, they oftentimes think. Okay, if I could be a developer, if I could be an engineer, which are which are actually great things to study, um the easier to get a job, but. One of the things that um I've experienced in my career and in terms of hiring a lot of folks is the ability to think critically. Uh to have analytical skills, and I'm not sure exactly which kind of classes, because I think it's touched on a lot of things that a lot of folks have said. I mean, learning how to read well, read analytically, to write well, those are very critical life skills. Which I think go into this idea of critical thinking, analytical skills, which I think our students should have, thanks.
Thank you. Um next is Sebastian.
Well, looking at our education system nationally, we still have a industrial, pre industrial. Education system, I believe that we can take the lead in a reforming education a little bit. And also, like many other applicants already stated, we also need to change our history curriculum, I believe. There are many calls for there to be a separate black history curriculum, I'm completely against that. For like, I believe that black history is American history, we should integrate it all together, just really teach the truth.
Oops, sorry, how is on mute there? Thank you. Uh last, I believe, is Joe.
Um yes, so um like Michael was saying, I think, you know, life skills is very important. Um one of the classes and and the groups that I belong to in in high school was a stock club. And I remember when they said invest in Apple and Pepsi and Coca Cola, and if I would have did that, I would have done great. Um but things like that, um getting a mortgage, you know, getting a car loan, what a credit score is, I don't think we teach them. So no matter if they become a plumber, or if they become an engineer, they need to, they they need these life skills. Um also, the racial thing, um my wife happens to be Dominican and she's dark skinned. And I didn't realize all these biases that exist until I married her. Um one day when we lived in Fort Lee, she was sitting on our stairs of a house we own, and the police came up to her on her staircase. And asked her, where do you live? We're sitting on our stairs, we own the house. I I never experienced this, until I seen that happen or her cry, I said, nobody would do that, but it, but it happened, so. We just have to be fair to one another and teach them what they're going through, so we can be fair and and respect, thank you.
Thank you, alright, I believe everybody went on that question. Um so now we will move to our second follow up question on the topic of education, so if a board member has a question. Please just uh feel free to ask, um if not, we can save it, we can bank it and save it to the end. Um alright, seeing none, we'll just continue along in the in the questions, so we'll move on to finance and planning. And this is the first person who will answer this question, we're gonna, we are circling back, Amy, as you started it, you'll start again. Finance and planning, so aside from COVID nineteen and school reentry. What do you see as the biggest challenge facing our district over the next year and five years? Uh give me just one second to get my timer back, whoops. Okay, uh Dami.
Challenge next year and five years? Other than COVID?
Yes.
I think it's something we can't control, um it it I I think. Uh there's just, you know, Leonia's reputation is going up and up, I I don't know what the magic is, um. So if we're getting more families with young kids, um you know, especially families with the the kids who need some special. Uh you know, the supports, special needs, uh I I think that directly impacts our um financial of the school district. Um I I will count that, thinking out loud here, and in five years, I I am, this thing is always stuck in my mind. Um the tuition formula uh for Edgewater students, um I think for us, Edgewater and Leonia to succeed. Or just enjoy the synergy that we have, um that that to continue, I think you really have to look and look into it harder. Especially for the capital projects, because the formula doesn't include any factor for the capital expenses. So that that those are the the very difficult things that we need time to resolve, so I think it's never early to. Dive into it and see what the the re- solution to that is.
Thank you, Jordan.
So for the one year challenge, I think is definitely our I T infrastructure, financially at least. Because the board has proposed the internet plan to overhaul our I T infrastructure, it's not something we can avoid, we can't kick the can down the road. The I T infrastructure is outdated, it's that simple. We need to make a change, and that's gonna be a fiscal responsibility that we have to take, unfortunately. And that's our one year challenge, I think over the next year, getting that implemented, making sure that we are back in the twenty first century in terms of technology. And for a five year challenge, I think it's going to be expanding the schools, honestly, because. Our number of, number of students continues to increase from Leonia and from Edgewater. And that's gonna be a fiscal responsibility if we need to expand the high school or move other capital projects to accommodate more students coming to our district.
Thank you very much. Alright, uh next is Michael.
So um so for the, in terms of the one year challenge, and and I do actually agree a fair amount with. Uh both of the folks who've spoken before me, I think it's the financial ability uh to address the needs that the school has. Um money is always tight, uh that's normal, but there's a lot of things which need to be done. Um so the ability to expand it within the constraints of the tax structures that we have, thinking creatively in those areas. Um and then in five years, you know, the capital plan to expand the schools, uh integrate uh Edgewater. I mean, and these are both challenges as well as opportunities, um I've talked about this quite a bit with parents in Leonia. That if it weren't for the combination of Leonia and Edgewater, we wouldn't have all the opportunities that we currently have with the middle school and high school. Um so that's my my quick answer to that, thanks.
Thank you. Um next is Sebastian.
I believe that it's very likely within the next year that we're gonna get past this pandemic. And just looking at it simply, I believe a lot of students, particularly uh younger students, will have a difficult time. Uh being with each other, integrating with each other, and I believe the board should focus more on that aspect. Also, with social distancing and all that. Um I believe there's been a rise in doping amongst young teens, so I believe we can s- take a step. And of just helping out in that area.
Okay, thank you. Um next is Joe.
Um yes, so finance and planning is a committee I would like to be on personally, um I said that in my letter. Um the year one, like everybody before me, infrastructure is key, um the firewall needs to be taken care of ASAP. Um the laptops um for the third, seventh and tenth grade need to be budgeted for. Um and any other smart boards or technology that the teachers feel we need. The five year, um there's a couple of things, one, the shared services, um I, it was just released today, an article. That the state of New Jersey is looking to consolidate some of these schools um and share services, and Edgewater app actually happens to be on one. They're K through six, so I can see a time where we absorb um at least their overhead, like some of the administrating costs. Um so we have to budget for that, also, the green requirements um keep coming up. You know, battery operated buses, propane buses, we're gonna need to budget for all of that, thank you.
Thank you. And last, uh Wendy.
Okay, so in terms of challenges within the next year, um I agree with the others as, and as the board has already put forth, the. Technology infrastructure plan, that's gonna be something that needs to be taken care of, the return to school, how can we do that safely, as I said before, making sure the air. Air filtration systems are optimal, uh making sure that the planning goes smoothly for things like changing classes. Uh how to, how to tackle lunch places where people would take off a mask if people are still masked at that point. Um we need a plan for, as um as Sebastian mentioned, the kind of the social well being of re uh of reintegration of students. How do we make sure that people's uh mental health and um social well being is maintained? Um in addition, I would like to point out that there is the, the issue of the move to the middle school, of the fifth graders moving to the middle school. And so I would hope to um that that would be something that they, that, you know, if the board needed to do anything to um to. Make that move go more smoothly, in any way that we could help to make that move go as smoothly as possible, include. Parents and other stakeholders in the voices that help to uh make that move go smoothly, those would be. The one year, five year population expansion and the aging bus fleet.
Thank you.
And the high school expansion, thank you.
Thank you. Um so now for the next question under finance and planning. How would you describe the financial condition of our district? We're gonna start with Jordan.
Uh I think it's a great question, I think that we're financially, we're doing pretty well financially, honestly, given. The constraints that we're under right now, we're in a pandemic, and that has hurt a lot of people financially. And I think that we've been able to be smart in terms of the money we've gotten from the CARES Act and other federal grants, state grants. That are like trying to keep us afloat, honestly, but I think that we're going to head down a road where we're gonna have to spend more money. As I said before, because number one, we're budgeting for the I T infrastructure, number two, we're gonna have to budget for an expansion. These are all bond issues that we're gonna have to take out at some point, and I think we're in a decent place right now. But I think we need to start planning so that we're not in a bad place five years down the road.
Thank you very much. Alright, next is Michael.
So I I definitely agree with what was just said, I think that we um. I mean, my experience in terms of finances and budgeting, you're always constrained, right, there's always more that you wanna do. Um next year, five years down the line, um there's certainly one time um. Uh funding that's occurring at the moment, um which will not happen, um you know, once we get past this pandemic, and those are things that we have to plan for. Uh the expansion is exciting, it offers a lot of opportunities, um but we have to uh kind of map a path through. But we have to kind of map a path through this, which will be sustainable for the future. So, you know, I definitely think it's a challenge, but it's also an opportunity. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next is Sebastian.
I generally do agree with all that's being said. Usually finances, money in general is very tight, especially with the board. And looking forward, we should save as much as we can in the event we're planning to expand our schools. And, uh, yeah.
Thank you very much. Next is Joe.
Yes. Luckily, it seems like Leonia, a lot of people have been able to keep their jobs. I haven't seen too many foreclosures. So I think financially, we're in a good shape there. But we have a lot of audit issues. There's a lot of things we need to clean up, like the billing with Edgewater and some of the overspending on some of the budgets. And it's gonna be tough because we want to keep under this 2% cap in our taxes to budget for everything we want. So I think we really need to clean up some of the audit findings. And I know we have a new manager, a business administrator handling that. So I'll work with that person to clean that up and keep our finances in order.
Oh, thank you. Uh, next is Wendy.
In terms of finances, I think that really having very careful planning for the future is really important. The capital funds are really important. We were able to expand the high school without going to a public referendum. And this was due to the careful planning over the years of putting money into that capital improvements fund. And we need to keep on that, keep doing that. We've been staying within the 2% cap. That's necessary. In fact, I think that, that we've been under that and could actually go above it if need be because of that. But I don't think that we will be doing that. And I see that, my understanding is that the, the per student money that we get from, from Edgewater is part of a state formula, which is being, you know, it's, it's sort of out of our hands. And so that's what we're working on from, from that. Thank you.
Thank you. And then last is Tommy.
Yeah, like, all of us have been saying, the, the budget is tight. I think we're really working all together on that note. The, the tech. Who, who gets the income from, from that bucket. I think we're really being really nice to each other and making this really work amazing. It's just, I, I can see the budget, the spending is, you know, very responsibly being dealt with. However, because it's a student growth, the population growth. Oh, and I really liked the, the example that Wendy brought up, that, that one example, it's expansion without any referendum. That's fantastic. But I, I am doubtful if we can do that again for next expansion. So again, I think I really need to look into what we can do to change that formula so that it captures the capital expenses. Because now the, the students from Edgewater is nearly 50% of, of the total student population. So I think that is the, the key area that we have to look into.
I'll cut you off there, just because it went over a minute. I gotta be fair to everybody, but thank you.
Sorry.
No, no worries. And thank you all for answering that question. So now we'll move to another opportunity again for a follow-up question from board members regarding finance and planning. If a board member has a question, please just unmute. If not, we'll move on and we can thank those follow-ups for the end. I'll give it a second. Okay, seeing none, no worries. We'll move on to our last section for the evening, and that is community relations. So the order of questions will go, Jordan, Michael, Sebastian, Joe, oh wait, no, sorry, wrong one. It's kind of hard to keep track of this. It'll be Michael, Sebastian, Joe, Wendy, Tommy, Jordan. And the question is, what is the public relations role of a school board? So we'll start with Michael.
So, um, I'm glad that we're not focusing on social media right now, because that would be a little bit outside of my area. But in terms of the, the community relations, what I think is most important, and I think that the Board of Education does a very good job, is being transparent, letting people know either through the website or various online forums, what's going on in the town? What are the important issues that the school board is, is looking into? And keeping people informed. I mean, I certainly, as a citizen of Leonia, feel that I know where to go to get the information that I need. And I think that the, you know, the, the, how to say, the, the kind of the openness that we already have is just something that we just need to continue and keep pushing forward. So overall, I'm, I'm pretty happy with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next is Sebastian.
The board's role with communication really is just to keep people informed, to keep people in the know. Very often, I know people who aren't really up to date with things regarding the school district community. I think as the Board of Education, we should try to get people more involved in general.
Thank you. Uh, Joe.
Um, yes. So communication is the bedrock for this board. We're all put here, whoever is appointed to speak and be a voice for our community. So we need to be visible. I know that's been very hard during the pandemic. I miss, you know, chatting with my neighbors and seeing everyone. We need to be engaging. We need to show up to the home and school meetings and see what's going on and let everyone know that we're here to support them and we're here to hear them. And continue to use social media to promote what we're doing and get people to be engaged. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next is Wendy.
The, in terms of community relations, it's really important to, to have a presence, to be visible to people, whether it's, you know, just sort of walking down the street, whether it's being in, having a booth at, at Leonia Day, for example. It's also really important to get the message out on a variety of platforms, like you've been doing. I really like the, the president's letter that you've created and the fact of having it on a remind. I particularly appreciate that. The initiative also to have board members go to the various, to go to the home and school meetings in all three schools, town council meeting, to have these, these moments of communication, these moments where we can, you know, sort of be part of the community. I think that's very important. We need to encourage people to come to the Board of Ed meetings. And I think that the role of the school board in terms of public relations is to really, you know, to champion the schools. We have, we have wonderful schools. And I think that any way that we can get that word out is really important.
Thank you. Um, okay, next is Tommy.
I'll probably echo everybody here. Um, I, I also believe the Board of Education needs to be like approachable, like in, in some of the someone or some people that our neighbors can, you know, easily approach and ask questions or throw, throw the ideas. And I think those contexts are important. Like Wendy pointed out, there are many different venues and opportunities we can do that. Unfortunately, because of pandemic, it's, it's, it's not that many right now, but we'll go back to normalcy then. I think that's definitely one way. And one thing I want to add to that is also being able to accommodate the parents with the language barriers. We, we are able to accommodate that needs, but it is just not, you know, clear to a lot of the parents. They just don't have courage to, you know, come to the board meeting, like, you know, I'm not gonna understand anything, like, what am I gonna do there? So hopefully we can, like, look into that and make that more accessible and accommodating. I think that will be really great.
Thank you. And then last on this question is Jordan.
So I think the public relations role of a school board is to get as many people in the know as possible. So transparency and approachability, those are the two key ideas here. I think that the board does a very nice job of putting out all the information, making it very accessible for the public. And I think that the board makes themselves very approachable. You encourage people to sign up for the meetings, who encourage people to come to the meetings. But some people, as Tommy said, they're, they don't want to come to the meetings. They don't want to speak at the meetings. So I think as a board member as well, we should be approachable. I think that all board members, we interact with different people every day. And if I were appointed to this position, I want to be open to all members of the public. I want people to come to me with their concerns so that I can bring them up at a board meeting and that we can hopefully ameliorate their concerns.
Thank you very much. All right. For the next question on community relations, very good question that was sent in. The, the word transparency is often a buzzword used in, in, in public office. So when, when people use the word transparency referring to elected officials in their offices, what do you think that they mean? We'll start with Sebastian.
I believe that in this sense transparency means that you are yourself. You're not really a difficult person to work with, to the, towards the public. And just really, you're just a figure, you're being yourself essentially.
Thank you very much. Uh, next is Joe.
Um, yes, I feel being transparent is just being fair and honest to each individual. So nobody feels that they're left out of certain information. As everyone knows, information is power. And if you're not transparent in telling one person one thing and telling somebody a slightly different, it looks a little biased. So being transparent, being equal and fair in sharing information. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next is Wendy.
I think that transparency means making information easily accessible to everybody, whether that be through the, the president, president's updates, the board website, postings in town. I think that transparency has to do with really getting, getting the word out. It's very much tied to the community relations in the last, as in the last question. One thing that I think is really important with transparency, transparency that I've seen be an issue in the past is that projects of the board haven't been, the word hasn't gotten out to the public soon enough. And so people say, oh, why are we hearing about this only now? And so I think that there has to be a concerted effort to make projects that the board is working on be announced to the public earlier so that there's more time for feedback for the public. Because after all, this is the taxpayers' money. They should have heard about it as quickly as possible and be able to weigh in on it throughout the process and not just at the end.
All right. Next is Tommy.
I'm 100% agree with Wendy. Those are the two points that I think important for the transparency. I think it's really just closely tied with the community relations or communication, which you guys are doing great right now, with the superintendent's update and president's letters. I think those are, I mean, a very good tools that can capture a lot of information in there. But just clearly there, there's no question. It's written down, right? And also the timing of the communication, especially for the potentially controversial or complex issues or projects. I think the earlier that the words get out, the better it is, because it takes time for the words to get out all the way. So I think those two things are important thing to be as transparent as possible.
Thank you very much. Uh, Jordan.
So I think that transparency means giving the public the information, all of the information that is legally allowed, so that they can successfully be civically engaged with the board. I am going to partially disagree with Tommy and Wendy. I think that we should be giving people information about controversial projects, but they should also have some sort of a personal responsibility. If we're giving them the information, they should be able to put in their due diligence as well. Do the research, look at the agenda, see that this is on the topic. I'm gonna go to the board meeting. I'm gonna speak. I'm gonna contact my board, one of the board members about this issue and tell them why I don't like it. I think that the public, in addition to us giving them the information, I think they also have a personal responsibility to help us out as well.
Thank you very much. And then last, Michael.
So, um, I, I believe that transparency means a holistic view of data and facts. And I think there've been a lot of good comments, but I think as Jordan said, when you have the data and facts, then the community can help. And what I've been thinking about this is that that leads to good decisions. So when you have transparency and you have the data and facts that are out there and the whole view of the data and facts, you get better decisions. I've listened to plenty of, not discussions for this town, but for businesses I do have in Pennsylvania, where there's a lot of data and facts which are presented, which are not at all holistic. So it's like point pieces of information. And I believe that transparency of a holistic view is absolutely critical. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We now have time for follow-up from the board. So if board members have a follow-up question, then we'll move on to our next topic. Do any board members have follow-up questions? Anybody? Okay. We'll move on to our next topic. Second, I have some questions right here. How would you evaluate the district's response to the pandemic? We will start with Joe.
Um, yes. So I would like to thank the board, you know, for trying to get our students back in as soon as possible. I think it's been a good response. It was a little hiccups in the beginning at ACS, especially with the tech issues that we didn't, we didn't realize that we were gonna have, bringing them back when kids were zooming, why they were in person and stuff. But otherwise, the effort and the energy of trying and the importance we put on bringing kids back and bringing them back safely is the correct response that we've been doing during the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next is Wendy.
I think that the, as, as Joe said, aside from those hiccups at the beginning, that had a lot to do with technology. I think that one thing to always keep in the front of your mind is, you know, what is for the good of the students? What is for the best of the students and what is for the best of all of the students? And so to, to proceed in a way that allows for really the best result of everybody, which means you're not gonna throw kids back in right away and risk being closed down again quickly. Because then that's in nobody's interest. So to really plan carefully, to listen to the advice of medical experts and to really approach it very carefully so as to keep things running as smoothly as possible. My son has been in, in the hybrid system, going to school in the morning at the high school in person and classes online in the afternoon. It's worked very well for him. And I know that if things had been done differently, as in some districts in other places have done, that there would have been closures and, you know, stops and starts. And I think that for the most part, that the district has, has done a good job with this. I appreciate it.
Next is Tommy.
Um, to me, uh, it has been constantly finding the balance. There are certain things that black and white, like mandates from the state, the bureau. So there's no question about it. It is what it is. And then when it's being implemented to the local level, there are gray areas, undefined areas. I think Leonia Board of Education did excellent job putting the initial plan out and also did the true functionality of BoE to listen to all the concerns and issues from the parents and families and teachers and all around, and were able to find the balance a couple of times. It is, it is, you know, a very difficult job. Well done. That's how I see it. Um, yeah, that's all.
Thank you. Uh, Jordan.
I think the Board of Education has done a very, very good job handling the pandemic. I think the important thing here is that the board was proactive, not reactive. I think that they included all the stakeholders in the restart plan. They're following all the guidelines to the letter. They're being very careful. I think it's very important that we stick to the guidelines, that we're trying to help our students in the best way possible, while getting ahead and planning for the next part, which I know the reentry committee was just recently formed as we're trying to get back into that in-person learning environment. And I think it's gonna be very important as we continue to work through this pandemic. I also want to thank the board for doing a very good job financially during the pandemic, also proactive in applying for the CARES Act money, in procuring that money and making sure that we put it to good use.
Oops, sorry. Thank you. Um, next is Michael.
I, I will answer this as a parent of the, my Leonia kids. And I definitely have to say I am grateful for the board and the teachers in Leonia, really for the intent to do what's best for the kids. This has been a very, very complicated situation. And I think other applicants have said that, you know, with 2020 hindsight, And I think other applicants have said that, you know, with 2020 hindsight, it's oftentimes clear to see where we might have done something differently, might have done something better. But I as I've always felt that as a parent, they've really tried to put the kids first and tried to get them integrated at the level that made the most sense for the different kinds of families who are, of course, in different circumstances. So it's a, it's it's really a thank you to the the board and as well as the teachers in Leonia.
Thank you, and next is Sebastian.
The board really has done a phenomenal job with the pandemic, with following CDC guidelines, state and federal guidelines. But I believe that we're approaching a time where it's time to flip the page, where life must go on while also maintaining a precaution. And really, just social distancing learning, virtual learning, is not the same as in-person instruction. So really, and also, I forgot where, but there was also a report that um, I don't know if it was in New Jersey or the United States as a whole, but around forty percent of students aren't really attending their classes. And I believe that by switching back to in-person instruction, you know, we're not really going to have that issue. But of course, in Leonia, that issue really isn't as prominent as elsewhere.
Thank you. The next question is, whoops, where did I put it? What is the most important issue to you, the board has made in recent years that you have disagreed with? And the order will go Joe, Wendy, oh, sorry, that was the last order. We'll go Wendy, Tommy, Jordan, Michael, Sebastian, Joe. Wendy, sorry, yes, Wendy, you may begin.
Okay, I'm sorry, could you repeat the question, something within the last one, many years that?
What is it, what is an important decision to you the last couple of years that board has made that you've disagreed with? It could include a decision the school district has made in 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 general, the Board of Education specifically. But it is a decision that you've disagreed with in any of the last couple of years. We don't want to limit you to a specific year, because that would be kind of strange. So just a decision that you have disagreed with that the board has made over the last couple of years.
That's a really good question. Because in the end, I've agreed with many of the board decisions, most of them, but not always fully, sometimes in part. I've often thought, well, if I had more information or if I had, you know, if I could figure out some small bit of it, like, for example, the the turf field, it would have been great, for example, if that had been something more environmentally friendly, you know. How could one explore that or the? But but in the end, I've, in the end, that I feel that the decisions that the board has made on on these major issues have been, have been for the best of of the of the all the students in the district.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dom.
Yeah, I I was disagreeing with fifth grader move. As many of you knew, that's how I got to know BoE really close, up and closing. And I I stuck around and and then I was like active participant in BoE meeting ever since. But you know what, it's behind me. At the moment, it was decided was behind me and I'm all for doing whatever I can do to make it work the best for all the students, especially fifth graders. Like the pandemic and then, for instance, my son, you can tell why I was against it. My first son, he's going to be in the middle school this September after like one year of virtual learning. So I I have butterfly my stomach, but like whether I I I get to fill in the vacancy or a night doesn't matter as a parent or as a BoE member, I'll just do my best to support BoE to make it as smooth as possible for my own kid and all the other kids who's going to middle school this September. Yeah.
And regarding fifth grade, we should have renderings of what it'll look like, not this meeting, but sometimes soon in the future. So parents of children rising up, you should be able to see renderings of what the new media center at the middle school will look like. Just had to plug that in there, sorry. Next is Jordan.
Uh, I'm also going to address the fifth grade move as something, as an example of how transparency works, actually. So when the board first put this idea in front of like the public, I said, this is a horrible idea. Because I was the middle, I went to the middle school, I went to ACS, and I believe there's a true difference between a fifth grader and a sixth grader. And I started asking questions like, what are the other options here? And at the end of the day, there wasn't another option. And I ended up agreeing with it at the end, I disagreed at first. But as I educated myself on the topic, I learned that this is the only option. This is what we have to do to solve our problems.
Thank you. Next is Michael.
So I I think that the most, I'm not going to say it's an area where I have disagreed. Because I think other applicants and Jordan just right now is saying, a lot of these are nuanced decisions. And I think that the the fact that the board process debates them intelligently, asks for community input and eventually comes to a decision, which, you know, you're never going to make everybody happy, I think is a good process. I think that the probably the most controversial one in my memory is the one of security. I remember going through this quite a bit. You know, it pertained mostly to us at ACS and it's and is a very difficult topic with a lot of hot buttons in it. And I, so I I don't, I I can't say that I disagree with where it came up because I I tend to be kind of moderate, so I can oftentimes see both sides of it. But I actually think, you know, the the debate itself was actually heartening. You know, that the board handled it, I think, in a way that was mature and open. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. And then Sebastian.
I can't necessarily say that I disagree with any decisions made by the Board of Education. I guess I can say that the fifth grade move is a little bit of a touchy subject, I guess, as students have a difficult time merging together. Also, the question of what our future is going to look like, like whether we're going to expand schools, how will that look like? Are teachers going to have more students in their class? Will education be efficient by then?
Thank you. Okay, so now, again, I have a few more questions, but they're just general questions. So, oh, Joe, did you not go?
No, I did not go.
Joe, I'm sorry, because I thought I skipped the line where you were supposed to start. I my apologies, you know, I I was looking at this and I thought, did I mess up? I thought you were supposed to start this round because I'm I'm just going by a list here. So my apologies to you, please.
Sure, so the the one thing I disagreed with, I know that you talked to medical staff and and you have committees regarding the two cases in a school closure. I I didn't understand that fully and and agree with that fully. If they were connected, if we had proof that the transmission happened in school, I could see with a hard stop at two that we closed down. I'm glad that Dr. Bernalini said that that has changed, it's going to go case by case now. But I just, I didn't understand that in the beginning and didn't fully agree with it unless there was more behind it. But I know you did it for the students in the best interest in the guidance you were given. Thank you.
Thank you, and again, Joe, I'm sorry, I thought you, hey, that was a mistake on my part. But thank you for alerting me. Alright, so there is time to follow up questions, but I did want to ask one question that that I had here from general questions. I have a few general questions if no board members have additional questions. And this question is, and we'll, Joe, we'll start with you this time because I feel bad that we didn't start with you last time. Is what is your take on, or what is your opinion on the future of the Leonia Edgewater relationship?
I think it's very important, a lot of us who talked about it today, and I just mentioned the article that came out where the New Jersey wants to consolidate some schools. I think they said eliminate three hundred districts, actually. And there's a lot, Demeris, Kloster, Edgewater, there's so many. And make like a regional shared services. So I think we're, you know, the the word I want to say, we're embedded with them, probably for life. So we have to make it work, we have to figure out a way to be reimbursed for the services, we're providing them correctly and make sure we have the space and the administrative staff to handle them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, since we started with Joe, we will, I'll I'll go back to the previous order that we were on. So I think, Tommy, I think you were supposed to start the next round. So Tommy, we'll go to you, then we'll go to Jordan, Michael, Sebastian, and then we'll skip Joe because Joe just went, and we'll go to Wendy. So that's that's my way to make up for for the mistake of apologies. So Tommy.
Yeah, sure. I I think everybody agrees that being together, as you're, as you order in Leonia, being together brings a lot of benefits to our students in both both towns. So I think it's pretty, I think consensus is there. In order for us to keep that going, secure that relationship and make sure, ensure that our students get, it's a really good quality, like the the quality of education we're getting right now is about the capital expenses and the the expansions that we, almost all of us is expecting or anticipating. Like, the previous expansion, I'm just, you know, I I didn't look into any, any of the information in detail, but it's just amazing how Leonia was able to do that without tapping on to increasing taxes for the taxpayers in Leonia and not even getting a any income or the source for funding from Edgewater. But I am, I I'm not pessimist, but I I am not optimistic about making that happen again. So I I think you really need to find a way to revise that, the tuition formula or the contract that we have between Leonia and Edgewater.
Thank you. Next is Jordan.
Uh, I believe the Leonia Edgewater relationship is extremely important because we basically cannot survive without them, in essence. They make up a major, a large portion of our student body, they provide the funding through the tuition. As Tommy said, I think that that tuition formula needs to be recalculated a little bit because we are going to anticipate these projects down the road. But I think that the, also the Leonia Edgewater connection is something that we've had forever and it's something that we will continue to have, as Joe said, if the state goes down this path of regionalization and things of that nature. And I believe that I have friends who I still talk to from Edgewater, even though I don't go to Leonia School District anymore. And I think that we have a very important relationship with them that we need to maintain. Thank you.
Thank you, and next is Michael.
So I I see the the relationship with Edgewater, I mean, it's, as everybody's said, this is, it's it's something which is effectively a fact right now. But I see it as a big opportunity, you know, and and in terms of I think, as I mentioned earlier, talking with a lot of the parents who have kids in the high school and middle school, there's a greater breadth of things that the kids are able to do because they have the resources of both of the student bodies. So, you know, I I think it's an opportunity, I think that, you know, going back to the the words of transparency, you know, how we charge tuition, how we account for things, it has to be transparent, it has to be correct. But overall, it's just, I I think it's it's a good thing for our town and for their town. Thank you.
Thank you. Sebastian.
Overall, the unity between Edgewater and Leonia is really the future. It's been that way for a while now. And I guess the only thing we have to keep in mind is whether we're not like, with the increase in population size from Edgewater and Leonia, how are we going to operate ahead of, in the future? What are we going to do with the overall situation?
Alright, thank you. And then we're going to skip Joe, who would normally go because he went first on this one, right? And we're going to go to Wendy, Wendy.
The Edgewater and Leonia relationship is really, really important. Think about the kinds of courses that are offered at the high school. AP Psychology, AP Physics, two layers of AP Calculus. You've got Statistics, you've got Anatomy, you have Creative Writing, you have Geography, you have multiple kinds of of clubs as well as sports teams. And none of these would be possible without the participation of the Edgewater students together with the Leonia students. If we didn't have the two schools combined, especially at the high school level, we would not be able to offer the breadth of courses that are there. This helps Leonia School District to become a really high performing district, to be well regarded, to be prestigious ranked. I think that's really important, which then helps, helps us, helps everybody in the town and the taxpayers as well in terms of having a district that is a district that of destination that people want to move into. So I feel that it's important to maintain this relationship and to create any kinds of contacts wherever possible, at the administrative levels and, you know, interpersonal levels with the home and school and just create a smooth flow between schools.
So now we've reached the point of the meeting where we're going to give you all thirty seconds, just a closing remark. Time flies. So we will start, we will go in this order, Jordan, Michael, Sebastian, Joe, Wendy, Tommy. So Jordan, your thirty seconds begins once you start speaking.
I just want to thank the Board of Education for taking the time tonight to interview all of us. I'm really hopeful that I will be selected for this position, if you liked my answers tonight. I think I can really make an impact on the board, bringing a different perspective as we try to navigate this tumultuous time in our history and as we continue to move forward as a school district to help our students succeed in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Michael.
Yes, I also want to thank the board for the opportunity to speak tonight and answer your questions. I think that I can add an interesting perspective, given my entrepreneurial and business background. We have a lot of financial questions that need to be thought of over the next year, five years as the school grows and expands, and I think I can offer an interesting perspective on that. Thank you again.
Thank you. Next is Sebastian.
Yeah, I too would like to thank the board for the opportunity to this interview, to interview all of us. And yeah, I just hope that I get selected. I feel like I can bring a fresh, new, interesting perspective as a son of an immigrant family, also as someone who has gone through unusual situations. And really, just as I stated in my application, oh, I believe that these situations, really, it's more about what you learn from your situations that really just give you knowledge, personal knowledge on a
Thank you. Next is Joe.
Yes, I would like to also thank the board and thank the community who called in or dialed in tonight. I hope that my accounting background will help you with adopt budgets to reach all your goals that's needed for the community and the school system. And just, I want to keep all the kids safe and the students safe, and I will keep trying to get all our teachers vaccinated. Thank you.
Thank you. And then is Wendy.
I'd like to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak with you tonight. And I hope that you all consider my candidacy. I think that what I could bring to the board is my really long history of volunteering in the schools, my knowledge both as a parent and as a volunteer in all three schools. I have extensive background in in dealing with the with with schools, the schools on a variety of levels. So I think that would be really something that I would hope that you would take into consideration. Also, as an educator myself, I know of the complexities in our current times, both in terms of social issues and, you know, our technological issues. And then also in terms of looking at things holistically. Thank you very much.
I can't, no, sorry, I just didn't prepare already. Tommy, you you started us and you'll finish us.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for the opportunity tonight. And I think I'm relatively well versed with the existing, like, the businesses and plans that are going on right now. So I believe I can be a good compliment to the existing board who's who's already doing great work. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to all of our candidates and to everybody listening tonight. You were all qualified, I've gone through all your applications and want to say that you're all very much qualified. And it's unfortunate that we have to pick one of you, but we will, and we will reach out to all of you this evening to let you know the board's decision, which we'll make in closed session. But for now, we will welcome you guys to stay. We have a ethics training coming up in at seven thirty, and it's seven twenty eight right now. So thank you again to all the candidates, and if there's a board member who would just like And if there's a Board member who would just like to motion us to take a brief recess, uh, just for two minutes and everyone can just get their bearings and that would be great. So is there a motion by a Board member?
Motion.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay, all in favor, I assume that's everybody, yeah. If there was any extensions, hearing none, great. So we'll take, uh, a few minute recess and we'll get started again at, uh, 7:31. Give you three minutes. Uh, thank you all. So if all applicants can just, uh, cha- I'm going to change your role to attendee. Uh, one second, so you all should be moving over. We will go ahead and get started in just another minute. Um, and I want to welcome all of Edgewater's members to tonight's meeting. We are having a joint meeting, so we'll go ahead and take a roll call in a second. All right, we'll go ahead and get started at 7:31. So, um, first and foremost, I want to welcome and invite everybody to turn their cameras on now that the interviews are all over. Um, and just welcome all of the members from the Edgewater Board of Education. Uh, tonight is our first joint meeting and, and I think it's been two years, I think. Um, but we'll use tonight as a joint meeting and also March 23rd as a joint meeting so we can share our, um, our, our trainings with the NJ SBA. So, um, Sandy, I wasn't sure, were we supposed to do a, a roll call for Edgewater? We are more than, I think we can.
That would be great, after your Leonia one, that would be great.
Sure.
Yeah, we actually need to, just so we can, uh, get credit for being here.
Gotcha, gotcha. And then, um, and then we'll move on to, um, Matt Lee is the representative from the NJ SBA who will be conducting tonight's training. So, uh, Rashawn, if you could do another roll call for, uh, Leonia's members, please.
Sure. Mrs. Albanese?
Present.
Mrs. De Jesus?
Present.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Mrs. Melvin?
President.
Mr. Park?
President.
Mrs. Rackham?
Present.
Mr. Robbins?
Present.
Mrs. Thompson?
Present.
Mrs. Wobbs?
Present.
Thank you. Also present this evening, Dr. Ed Bertolini, myself, Rashawn, Science School Business Administrator, uh, Mr. Victor Power, uh, Board Attorney. And I'm not sure if we have our student representatives with us this evening.
Oh, we, we do, we do. Uh, let me, let me actually add them. They are here, give me one second. Chris and Eli, you guys could just raise your hands so I could find you really quickly. There you are. Uh, there's Eli. Panelists, and Chris, where are you, Chris? Uh, perhaps Chris isn't here this evening. I thought I saw you, but. Um, okay, so Eli? Present.
So I have him noted. Uh, so when's your roll call, Mr. President?
Thank you very much, and I'll turn it over to Christina. I believe, uh, you were going to do the roll call for Edgewater.
Yes, thank you. I'm, uh, trying to fill the admirable shoes of our BA. Uh, is Dr. Sella here?
Yes.
This is Tamara Sella, she's one of our new, um, Board of Ed members. Mr. Greenspan?
Present.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Harris?
Here.
And Ms. Harris is, uh, our other brand new Board Member and she's also my alternate for, um, the Board of Ed, uh, liaison for Leonia. All right, and Mrs. Klein is not attending today, that ends my roll call.
I'm here, I'm here, Christina.
You are, you are.
With the power.
Sorry.
Mrs. Klein.
Here.
And Sandy, welcome back to a Leonia meeting. It is good to see you again at our one of our.
I, I feel like I'm at home again. This is wonderful. Thanks for having us.
Welcome.
And we'd also like to note that, um, Siobhan, our new superintendent, is attending with us as well. Although she doesn't start till April, she has been definitely working quite a bit lately. But, uh, everyone, please join me in welcoming, uh, Siobhan to Edgewater and to Leonia.
Welcome, and welcome to all the new Board Members as well, and welcome to the entire Edgewater Board of Education. And thank you for joining us. Um, just read this again, adequate notice of tonight's meeting in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act was provided through the following methods. Distribution of notice to the record, posting. This is, they, they rewrote it this time, so it's a little bit different. Posting of the agenda to the school district website through remind text message and, uh, uh, and social media outlets. I like, I like the new version. So, okay, so, um, we will now turn it over to our, the NJ SBA representative, Matt Lee, who will, uh, be doing our ethics training, uh, on the role of Board Member. So, um, Matt, can you share your screen or, um, do you want to share your screen?
I do want to share my screen. I don't have the ability right now.
Okay, so I'm gonna, um, make you the host to, uh, be able to share your screen. Just make sure that you're able to make me the host again, so that way when you leave, you don't end the entire meeting. I've done that before. So I'm gonna go ahead and make you the ho- uh, make you a host, and you should be able to share your screen, let me know.
Mr. President, you can make him as a co-host.
I, I, you know, I just saw that as a new feature, so, but hopefully he, uh, doesn't end the meeting with he, when he leaves. I, I did that at a committee meeting and I apologize to Isaac for that.
It, it keeps me up at night, Bryce.
Okay.
All right. So, uh, welcome to all the new members. It is, um, great to see new faces here. I do miss, uh, some of the old folks as well, but, um, things do change on boards at, at times. So, um, happy to see all these new folks. Introduce myself real quick. My name is Matt Lee. I am the, uh, Field Services Representative for the New Jersey School Boards Association. Um, my territory is all of Bergen County, and I have been with the association for just about five years at this point. Prior to that, I was a school board member myself for 20 years and a Board President for about 10 of those. So, um, I have been in your shoes and, uh, I, I definitely, um, am here to help you adjust to your new roles as Board Members. So tonight, we're going to talk about ethics for school officials. It's always, uh, fun and intimidating to do an ethics presentation while the Board Attorney is here. So when I slip up, because I'm not an attorney, um, I'm happy for you to jump in there and tell me what I did wrong.
I'm sure everything will be perfect, frankly.
I've actually done this once or twice before, so, uh, I think I'll be all right. So i- it's a Board's obligation, uh, under the law to review the, uh, Code of Ethics once a year. It's typically a function that happens at the organization meetings for each Board, and that is usually, uh, done by just a quick review of the 10 tenets of the code and, uh, a quick sign-off sheet, and, and that fulfills your obligation. But our presentation is meant to give a lot more depth to what's, um, behind the school ethics code, the, uh, the statutes behind it, and also, um, give you some information about some of the latest cases and advisory opinions that the SEC has issued. So with that said, I'm going to, uh, begin now. I will, um, at times, call upon, uh, folks, uh, from the two Boards to, um, give me a little bit of feedback on some of the cases we're describing. So a- at times, I will have you open up your microphones and just, uh, hopefully participate a little bit. So, um, start off with the School Ethics Act and its origins. It was effective in April of 1992. And it is, uh, basically meant to, um, to put forward that it's essential for Board Members to conduct themselves in such a way that they hold the respect and confidence of the people they serve. They are, um, advised to avoid a conduct that's in violation of the public trust or which creates a justifiable impression that the public trust is being violated. And we'll see an example of that as we talk about the, uh, 2020 Advisory Opinion that's in this presentation a little bit later. So that, remember that term, a justifiable impression. Uh, in addition, uh, it called upon, um, you know, the state to develop standards to guide their conduct, which of course manifested itself in the, uh, Code of Ethics. And then also that there be some disciplinary, disciplinary mechanism to ensure the maintenance of those standards. And that, of course, refers to the, uh, School Ethics Commission. Uh, important to point out that the provisions of this act also apply to charter school trustees and administrators since they do work with public money as well. For some of the newer Board Members, you may not be familiar with it, but New Jersey CUSAC is the monitoring system for the state of New Jersey. It's how they keep an eye on the quality that is being, um, put forth by public school districts. Um, CUSAC does, and this may not be, um, you know, something that you're aware of as folks coming new to the Board, but there is a section of CUSAC devoted to governance. And governance is the function that school boards provide within a school district. And one of those governance indicators, uh, talks about the fact that Board Members and school administrators need to, in compliance with the, uh, School Ethics Act, file a timely and properly completed financial and personal relative disclosure statement. Another thing that they check under this indicator is that the Board has annually discussed the School Ethics Act and that no Board of Ed member or administrator has been found in violation. And there are eight points associated with that on CUSAC. And as, uh, Dr. Bertolini will probably attest, CUSAC points are valuable. So the School Ethics Act established a few things, and as you can see, as they're arranged around this circle, it established the School Ethics Commission, as we referred to earlier. It established the Code of Ethics, which came nine years later. Uh, that actually, um, was based upon a Code of Ethics that New Jersey School Boards Association adopted in the mid 70s. Conflicts of interest were defined, as well as the need for doing the disclosure statements we discussed earlier. And then the training requirements, requirements for Board Members were also spelled out. And we're going to talk about those in the next slide. As you can see here, there are a number of courses required in your first term as a Board Member. They are creatively called Governance 1, 2, and 3. Governance 1 in your first year talks about the skills and knowledge necessary to serve. It discusses CUSAC, and it also discusses the chief school administrator evaluation process, which by code, you are supposed to be, um, uh, acquainted with within your first six months of taking office. Now, in years 2 and 3 of your first term, you take Governance 2 and 3, which are respectively about finance and student achievement. And then, within one year after each reelection, you must take Governance 4, which is related to legal updates and other appropriate update information, um, for school Board Members. So again, each year of your first term, you must take mandatory training. And then the first year of any subsequent term, you must also take a mandatory training. Now, a little bit about the School Ethics Commission. School Ethics Commission is a nine-member board that is appointed by the Governor for a three-year term. Uh, there can be only, uh, up to five from any one, uh, party. There's two school Board Members. In point of fact, the School Ethics Commission isn't always fully staffed, and that can be a problem. And we'll talk about that in our next slide. The SEC's output is basically two things. First is advisory opinions, which is, um, issued upon request by a school official in relation to proposed activity or conduct by a school official. And the, the question posed is, should the circumstances take place? Would that constitute a violation of the Act? And we talked in the prior slide about it being important that the School Ethics, uh, Commission is fully staffed or staffed as, as, uh, many of it was possible. Because advisory opinions need six votes from the SEC in order to be made public and provide guidance to the rest of the state. So in times in the past, when there have only been five members on the School Ethics Commission, they weren't able to issue any advisory opinions. And therefore, when they did finally become staffed enough, they issued a slew of them at one time, and it created a bit of a scramble across the state for people to kind of adjust to the new advisories that were being, um, put in place. So that's why fully staffing that is important. The other piece that the SEC works with is ethics complaints. Ethics complaints can be filed by anyone. So a member of the public, a Board Member against another Board Member, an administrator against a Board Member. And these allege that there was an actual violation of the School Ethics Act or the Code of Ethics. Um, these complaints are not anonymous, and they also must be specific to the piece of the Ethics Act that has, or the Code of Ethics, I should say, that has been violated. So what happens if you are found guilty of a violation of the Act? Well, there's sort of a progressive, um, set of penalties that can be assessed. The SEC recommends them and the Commissioner, uh, imposes them. So starting at the left side of this slide, the most sort of, um, minimal, if you will, uh, penalty that can be assessed is a, a reprimand, and that is essentially a formal rebuke by the Commissioner. So you'll get a letter, basically says you've been found in violation and, you know, you need to refrain from that kind of conduct. Moving up in seriousness, if you will, is, uh, the next, um, level, which is a censure. A censure is also, you know, a rebuke by the Commissioner. It's, it's formal, and it is also, in this case, publicized by the adoption of a resolution by a Board. So in this case, it's a very public, uh, rebuke of your, uh, Board Member's conduct or administrator's conduct. The next two are fairly self-explanatory. There is, um, a suspension, uh, the length of which is recommended by the SEC and then decided by the Commissioner. Uh, there's also accompanied by a formal resolution passed by your Board. And then the last piece is removal, in which, uh, the Board Member is taken off their Board for the remaining length of their term. So those are the penalties. This is the, uh, 2020 SEC scorecard, if you will. So, um, starting on the left-hand side of the slide, we look at the advisory opinions that were drafted. There were 21 in, in 2020. One advisory opinion that was made public, and we're going to talk about that next. The next, um, set of, uh, cases that we're going to discuss is the mandatory training violation cases. Uh, we talked about having to do Governance 1, 2, 3, or 4. Well, some folks don't actually get that done and it requires time, and they're assessed a penalty for that. In the case of 2020, there were eight members removed from their Board for failing to do their mandatory training. Uh, four members were suspended for 30 days each, and then 10 members were reprimanded. And, uh, the variance in those penalties is, uh, likely due to the circum- the variance in those penalties is likely due to the circumstances under which they missed those trainings. And then the last piece is school ethics violations. 28 of them were considered in 2020. 24 were dismissed. And four cases were recommended to the commissioner. And we'll discuss them later. I see there's a hand raised. Question. Feel free to open your mic and yell it out. No? Okay, maybe that was a mistake. All right. So here's the advisory opinion from 2020. If you look up here, there's a citation that indicates when this happened, right? So this 20 is indicative of 2020. And the 13 is a case number assigned by the SEC. This is the only public advisory opinion from 2020. And sort of the high-level facts here are that a superintendent's sister-in-law, brother's wife, was a lunch aid in the district and was there in place before the superintendent was hired. This person was selected by the principals as a finalist for a secretarial position. Superintendent reached out to the SEC for an advisory opinion on this to have it sort of considered whether or not it was fair to prohibit a qualified embedded employee to move into another role only because her brother-in-law is a superintendent. In ruling on this, the SEC said that if the superintendent recommended his sister-in-law for this promotion, and he would have to bring that to the board, he would violate the statute and B and/or C of the code. And the reasoning was that the public could perceive his action was securing an unwarranted privilege or advantage or employment for another, which is a category of relative, and would leave a justifiable impression that the public trust was being violated. So we can see that there was a little bit sort of a question there because the superintendent didn't really necessarily select this person brought to them or to him by the principals. But the SEC said that the public could reasonably infer that there was something unethical going on in that she was related to him. So that promotion was advised not to go forward. They also reinforced in this advisory opinion that the superintendent needs to recuse himself from any discussion on his sister-in-law's employment as a lunch aid. And we'll see a little bit later in the presentation, we'll talk a little bit more about that. Okay. So this is the actual code. And there are 10 tenets to the code. They are done by letter. And we'll go through them one by one. I just want to point out that in the presentation, which I think you all have a copy of, that the standards that are used to evaluate conduct against to look at the things that are considered in order to figure out whether or not there might be a violation. Those are the things the SEC uses. So Tenet A reads, "I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Ed, and quarters paid schools. Desired changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures." This is sort of a reminder that the board needs to behave in an ethical and legal way and can only affect change in their district through legal procedures or ethical procedures. Tenet B, "I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children, and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing." With this piece of the code, it's acknowledging that there are a number of different reasons that a board member might be drawn to board service. But once they become seated as a board member, they need to broaden the scope, whatever brought them to the board, and to now consider everything that comes before the board in order to meet the needs of all the children in their district, regardless of any distinguishing characteristics. Tenet C is where the board's role is actually defined. And in defining what the board does, it also sort of lays out boundaries for what the board does not do. And we'll talk about that later in the code as well. But here it defines that the board's actions really relate to policymaking, to planning, to appraisal, and also to communicate, actually. And it says that it will only help to frame policies and plans after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them. So in laying out what the board does, one of the things it does is it says that the board is not involved in anything else within the district, which is the administrator's role. Again, reinforces this point in Tenet D. So I'll carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members to see that they are well-run. And it clearly lays out here that the administration of the schools, so the day-to-day running, is not the purview of the board, and that the board needs to work together as a unit to ensure that things are running well within the schools. E, once again, speaks to the fact that the authority rests within the Board of Education and does not rest with individual members of the board. So it reads, "I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and make no personal promises or take any private action that may compromise the board." And we'll see some of that later in our cases. Tenet F, "I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends." So two important points here. Whatever it is, again, that may have brought you to your board service, whether that had been the support of a certain political party in your town or whether, you know, the music parents or the football club backed your candidacy. You need to leave those, you know, very sort of specific interests behind and think about it in the terms of the global interest of all the children in your district. And then also it advises you that you should not use your position to reap some kind of a personal gain or to help anybody else advance within the district. G, "I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to schools, which if disclosed would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its school." The first part of this is really quite serious in nature. All of you have likely been exposed to executive session at this point. The sort of operating principle of public bodies, which J, Board of Education, is of course, is that things that affect the public need to be done out in front of the public in the open. There are exceptions to that, and they are defined in the Open Public Meetings Act. There are nine exceptions. And if the subject matter that the board is discussing meet those nine exceptions, you can do that in executive session. And if you do things in an executive session, the subject and the discussion that needs to take place in executive session needs to stay within the board members and the administrators that took part in that session, and should not be discussed outside. And that includes everybody, your family, your spouse. Nobody besides sworn members of the board should be privy to that information. H, "I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief administrative officer." This really speaks to the fact that the board is not the hiring authority. Even though they approve hirings, the personnel function belongs to the superintendent. And, you know, should the superintendent follow the hiring policies of the district, you know, perform a rigorous vetting process for candidates that are brought to the board, and, you know, bring to the board people that are fit within the educational plans and the educational goals that have been set by the board and the budget that has been passed by the board, then, you know, it's up to the board to appoint those folks as recommended by the superintendent. I, "I will support and protect school personnel in proper performance of their duties." You know, if your if your conduct, whether within a board meeting or somewhere around in the community, is deemed to be undermining or compromising or harming school personnel in any way, you certainly can be found in violation of Tenet I. You know, basically, if school employees are doing what they should be doing, board members should be supporting that activity and not speaking ill of it in public. And finally, J, "I will refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer, and will act on the complaints at public meetings only after the failure of an administrative solution." This is where the code refers to the chain of command that we most of us are familiar with. The chain of command really basically says that if there is a problem that has been brought to board members or the administrators by a member of the public, that person should be referred to the place within the staff that has, you know, sort of the most involvement with that issue as a beginning point for getting a complaint resolved. And then if it doesn't happen at that point, it moves up the supervisory chain of command until it reaches the superintendent. If board members become involved in issues like that before it has exhausted the chain of command, then they, as, you know, a member of essentially the court of last resort within the district, could potentially compromise their ability to render in a partial decision once it does become something that the board has to resolve. So move those things to the chain of command, give a heads up to your superintendent, and you will you will put yourself in good standing relative to this piece. So we're going to take a look at the 2020 SEC decisions now. You all can remember a few slides back when we talked about what the penalties could be for violations of the Code of Ethics and/or the School Ethics Act. So I'm going to ask you to kind of weigh in on what you think the circumstances described here would require relative to a penalty by the Now, I will I will acknowledge that, you know, everybody thinks the pertinent facts are there, and I'll give you enough information to at least make a bit of a guess as to how these cases were decided. So first case reads like this, "A board member employed as a teacher in another district failed to disclose income received as president of that district's education association." So a board member works in another district, is the president of the union there, but did not disclose any income received as part of that role. So if you open up your mics and let me know what you think about that in terms of what kind of a penalty do you think was assessed there and which piece of the Act or the code do you think was violated?
Matt, shouldn't that have been on the financial disclosure form?
It should have, absolutely.
So would he be reprimanded?
I don't know. Would he? Anybody else?
Second mayor, you say that he should have been reprimanded for on the financial disclosure.
I think my vote is for censure because it seems like such a clear conflict of interest rather than, you know, an accident or something like that.
Okay.
That goes, I guess that goes to the point of what was the reason for the failure to disclose. Was it unintentional, or is there some scented there?
Okay.
I would think suspension or removal because he wouldn't be able to separate, you know, if he's the president of the Education Association and he's also the Board of Education member, like, how do you separate yourself from those those hiring decisions that happen that are made by the by the superintendent?
Just to be clear, he's the president of the union in another district.
Oh, excuse me. Okay.
Okay, so let's see how that came out. So, censure was correct. Laws for you?
Good job, Maria.
He was found to have violated the statute, which required him to, you know, fill out that financial disclosure document properly. So, very good. And I will tell you that we present these cases all the time in our presentations, and it's always interesting to see not only what people guess the penalty should be, but what the SEC actually imposed as well because let's just put it this way, it's a moving target sometimes. All right. So in this next case, a teacher who was also a parent sent an email to the full board about the superintendent's handling of an incident. A board member who was intending to email the board used Reply All. So the parent-teacher also received the email that included the details of the board's executive session discussion. Now, clearly, that's a problem. How serious a problem is it?
It's violation of sunshine law.
Certainly potential for that, yep.
I think, go ahead, Bryce.
Oh, no, no, Maria, please, please.
I would say that, you know, hitting Reply All instead of Reply is such a common mistake that I feel that either nothing would happen or at most a reprimand.
Okay. Is that all that happened here?
I agree. Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, no, sorry, I might have, I just was gonna say, I agree with you, Maria.
I would agree with Maria, but I do think, I feel like there's something about the added part about the including the details of the board's executive session discussion that kind of makes it a bit more of a tsk tsk than, but I agree in terms of Reply All, that's an easy mistake, but, you know, should never happen, but I don't know, that second part just kind of makes me think it's something a little bit more.
I think you're right on target, Bryce. That's a big component of this. So found to have violated G, so confidentiality. And also, there was a potential to violate the Open Public Meetings Act. The penalty was recommended to be a reprimand. And that speaks to the point of, yeah, I guess we could have just had a little bit of a mental lapse there. And when we put the slide together, commissioner's decision was not there yet, but it may have been now, I haven't checked. Okay. This is actually started in 2019. So a board member posted content on a blog that contained deliberate, repeated, and unnecessary attacks of the qualifications, salary, and general employment of a tenured teacher in the district. I don't know if they're unnecessary attacks, but these are framed as unnecessary attacks. So what do we think on that one?
Clearly violating the Tenet of protecting personnel. It's also dealing with personnel issues at a public forum. And it seems like it's pretty deliberate. It says it so right there. So it's a, no question, this is a very serious violation.
Agreed. All right, let's see what the SEC, there's a couple of interesting twists in here as well. Okay, so violations of CE and I, right? Penalty muted out was a six-month suspension. So relative to C, gross misrepresentations were meant to interfere with negotiations. And this is kind of what I was alluding to before when I said that we don't have every single circumstance, you know, represented in each of these little capsules. So and then they deem that in these misrepresentations that frames and policies and plans, framed policies and plans before the board consulted those to be affected by them. So if you remember back to Tenet C, So if you remember back to Tenet C, it talked about the members need to communicate with the folks who who's who will be affected by the policies. E, the board member smearing and verbally attacking a staff member in a publicly accessible forum diminishes the board's integrity and may intimidate the public to address the board. And then the last one, harm the staff member's ability to properly teach and perform obligations. So that speaks to not supporting your your staff. Interesting twist here, right? Board member argued his rights as a private citizen and that the required disclaimer was used, that he was not speaking on behalf of the board. So going back to the days when board members were speaking basically through your your typical letter to the editor, it was advised that board members who want to speak publicly about certain issues may do so, but they needed to include information in whatever communication that was that said that acknowledged that they were a board member and also, you know, put upfront that they were speaking for themselves and not for the board. Well, in this case, the SEC basically said that because his status as a board member was referenced frequently, it was not convincing that he was speaking as a private citizen. So even though that disclaimer was put out there at a certain point, his status as a board member, you know, was so prominent within the communication that it wasn't credible that he was just speaking for himself.
Matt, I have a quick question on that one. It might sound silly, but I mean, does the same go for the opposite for giving praise for specific teachers? I mean, if there was a teacher that, you know, if unknowingly a board member gave positive feedback about a teacher or an experience with a teacher and unknowingly there were, you know, up for a salary increase or something like that. I mean, could, I I mean, there's, I don't know who's harmed in that, but the whole, going back to the notion of the justifiable impression, like, could that be perceived that way?
I mean, I I guess you can't ever rule out that somebody could take, you know, let's call it undue praise as somehow a board member favoring a teacher. I don't know that you could be necessarily held liable for that. That would be an awful lot to prove that one thing was related to the other. Any any thoughts, Mr. Lopira?
No, I I think that's right. I mean, it it would be, I mean, you you wouldn't be violating the teacher's rights insofar as, you know, praising the teacher isn't the type of thing, I mean, we wouldn't even necessarily need to issue a teacher a Rice notice if we were going to be praising them, right? I mean, because, you know, that we only have to issue a Rice notice if we're going to talk about them in executive session in in a way that might adversely affect their employment going forward, so. But in terms of like the School Ethics Act, no, I don't think it's it's likely to be an issue, but in in this particular case, which happened out of the Lodi Board event, I'm not going to say who the board member was, was pretty egregious. You you can you can easily find the opinion online. It's the last decision that was issued in 2019 by the School Ethics Commission, and it's pretty over the top.
Yeah, we actually have the the PDFs indicated in the back of the presentation, so if anybody wants to read the circumstances, you're able to. I have to agree with you, Mr. Lopira, that was definitely one for the books.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. I have a question about that as well, too.
Yeah.
So let's say, whatever the previous one, the big part of it, is it because of the it was the the public accessible post that that was the whole issue of a blog, that blog does the issue about it, or I mean, also is about the comment of something that whatever the tenure teacher is a issue about it, is a both?
Yeah, I mean, so there's always this sort of question about, you know, what level is okay for a board member to participate in from a like a social media standpoint? And while, you know, board members retain First Amendment rights, they also have responsibilities that are connected to their role as a state official. So there's a lot of room to go back and forth on that issue, and that's why I don't think there's like a ton of real definitive advice on it. The best advice I ever heard was just don't do it, so. And you know, clearly, the biggest problem here is the way that he is undermining staff, right? Not that he he's on a blog, although the combination is pretty lethal as you can see, so. All right. Hope that answered your question. Did that help?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. All right, so commissioner revoked the district's send-receive relationship with an outer state district, identifying an in-state district to instead receive the district's students. This decision impacted the board president's child. The board president fully participated in actions that resulted in the passing of a board resolution to continue the relationship with that other state district and to allow the tuition to be paid by the district, which clearly is a blatant disregard of the commissioner's decision and certainly a conflict of interest. So what do we think the penalty might look like there? Mind you, commissioners don't like their noses thumbed up, right? They don't like that.
I was gonna say that that board president is the opposite of what this board president went to. I think he'd probably be, that that seems pretty serious. That seems like he'd be kicked off. It seems like he's going against like the direct orders of of the commissioners. I can't imagine that would be taken as as just a censure. I'm I'm gonna put my weight behind, and he's gonna get removed from the board for that.
Okay, it's a little bit of a twist, so. All right, here we go. So clearly violation, right? You see violation of CE and F, you see B, CNF. Penalty was a censure, but that was only because the member was off the board already. So the SEC would have recommended removal. Okay, last one.
I think that counts as Bryce being right, though. Bryce gets a point.
I agree, I agree. So board member attends an all-expenses-paid conference paid for by a potential vendor that the member introduced the district based on a pre-existing relationship. This is also fairly lovable, kids. Any guesses?
We've talked about this with our travel expense policy, didn't we? Travel expenditures policy, didn't we? This is part of that.
Not not that any vendor was going to pay us, just to clarify.
Sorry, I should clarify that. No, no vendor was paying us, we talked about. You said it was local, Matt?
Yeah.
So if it's local, you're not supposed to be staying overnight anyway.
No, I don't mean local travel. It's a local district involved.
Oh, local district.
Did the vendor get any contracts with the district?
We'll see.
I'm gonna say this is a big no-no. You you have to be kicked off for this. This is, come on, like, this is crazy.
All right, here we go. So penalty, six-month suspension, right? Violations of CE and F. Yeah, so action unrelated to duties, no reason for a board member to be involved in this, board members don't do that. Actions compromise the board ability to contract this vendor if they wanted to, and certainly compromise the public opinion of the board, and also use the position to gain benefit for himself, which is a free out-of-state trip, which, as I understand it, was to pre-COVID Arizona, so. SEC's recommendation was removable to deter other school officials from accepting gifts, but this board member was just given a suspension. Also, I believe, pushed to stay on until the case was resolved, and that was denied.
If I remember correctly, Matt, I think I think that board member was also advised by the superintendent and maybe even the board attorney, if I recall correctly, not to go, and the board said, I'm doing it anyway.
Yep. That is
My recommendation is don't do that.
Yeah. Listen to your attorney. All right, a quick one. There's a board resolution to approve the hiring of the architecture firm that you work for. Can you participate in the vote? Okay, yeah, so that that's clearly a conflict of interest. According to the statute, you need to recuse yourself if there's a benefit to you as a school official or to your immediate family due to any of the things on the list that we see here, which generally evolve around gaining something financially or some kind of personal benefit. So if that is the case, there's no discussion and no vote on your part as a board member. Yeah, when I was a board member, if I had conflicts like that, and I certainly did, I left the room. I didn't even want to be there when those topics were discussed so that I couldn't be called into question in any in any way. And just a quick note at the bottom of the slide, when we talk about the SEC definition of immediate family, which is what's being discussed here, that equals a spouse or dependent child residing in same household. And one of the things about the SEC is sometimes they can use different standards to define things that they're looking at. So in this case, this is their definition of immediate family. And as we're going to see in this next slide, when we talk about who qualifies as a relative, generally speaking, we're looking at the accountability regulations definition of what a relative is. And, excuse me, if you look at these six boxes, basically, you've got a pretty wide array of folks that can be counted as your relative when it comes to defining whether or not you have a conflict. And the asterisk note at the bottom of the slide really expands that quite far beyond that as well because it's whether related to you as a school official or your spouse or partner by blood marriage or adoption. So that's a big chunk of people that would give you pause when it comes to activities you have on the board and and what conflicts may exist, so. Just keep those in mind when you're thinking about what you can and can't do as a board member. As with everything related to conflicts and every legal question, your board attorney should be, you know, your go-to resource for whether or not you are in conflict. So ethics, district has an opening for guidance counselor. It would be a perfect job for your nephew who lives two towns away. Can the district hire your nephew? Give me a thumbs up or a thumbs down. I only see Bryce's thumb.
I think it could.
Yeah, I think they could. It's just maybe you can't vote on it.
Exactly.
Like, the board is meeting to discuss the superintendent's performance evaluation. Your spouse is an aide in the district. Can you participate in the discussion? Thumbs up, thumbs down? Thumbs up is you can participate in the discussion. All right, here we go.
Yes or no?
So member relative, right? Those are relatives. You may not hire the relative of a board member or a chief school administrator. Your nephew cannot be hired, okay? We have a little note there, maybe exceptions, and the one that, you know, we classically talk about is if there's a need for a teacher in a discipline that is very hard to find. So let's just use a Latin teacher, for example. If the board can demonstrate, or the administration, I should say, can demonstrate that they've conducted an exhaustive search and that they couldn't find anyone else to qualify to fulfill that role within the district, they can appeal to the executive county superintendent, and they may get permission to hire that person. But that is a rare exception.
Matt, now, sorry, is that just because there's just too many opportunities for conflicts?
Oh, of course, yeah, absolutely. And, you know, certainly the perception in the public is that, you know, this is just a way for Daniel Lee to get his relatives' jobs, right?
Thanks.
Now, if you have a relative who already works in the district, and this is our second scenario back here, right, your spouse is an aide in the district, can you participate in the superintendent's performance evaluation discussion? The answer is no, you cannot. And, you know, this this first box really relates to the advisory opinion we talked about earlier, that an administrator may not exercise direct or indirect authority over their own relative. And if you recall, that relative worked in the district prior to the superintendent being hired, right? So she doesn't lose her job, but he can't manage her, basically. Now, if the relative already works in the district, a board member may not take part in any employment matters concerning not only the CSA but also any supervisors in the chain of command between the relative and the CSA. So your principals, your buildings and grounds supervisor, any of those people, you need to refuse yourself from any discussion of those folks and their and their employment personnel matters. And then finally, a board member who has a relative who works in the district can't take part in a search, selection, or vote to hire a new superintendent, nor can they take part in post-hire evaluations or any contract discussions. And this is really to the point of, you know, you can't interview search firms if you're looking for a new superintendent. You can't define criteria for hire. You can't discuss the ad, for example, that's going to be used to gather resumes for this opening. You really have absolutely no involvement in the hiring of a new CSA. Okay. Board is voting to approve the memorandum agreement with the local education association. You're a teacher in another district, and you participate in the vote. Yes is a thumbs up, no is a thumbs down. Bryce, where are you, buddy? There you go, okay. All right, so this is another area in which the SEC has evolved, let's put it that way, over time. Now, relative to this chart, it emanates from an advisory opinion from 2017. And the chart works this way. In column one, we have a description of the relationship to the board member. In column two, whether or not that person is a member of a statewide public teachers' union. And then columns three and four, whether they can participate in negotiations or vote to ratify the contract respectively. So if, using the first row, your spouse, your dependent child, your child who's not a dependent or a relative works in the district, you're out on both counts. No negotiations, no vote to ratify. If yourself, your spouse, or your dependent child works out of district in a, but is in a current statewide public teachers' union, you may not participate in negotiations, but you may, after the memorandum agreement is done and salary guys are complete, any other compensations items are settled, all the terms are done, you may be briefed on and vote on the contract. This is a change from the way it was prior, where you were not allowed to vote as well as not allowed to participate in negotiations. Little footnote at the bottom, absent another conflict, we'll talk about that on the next slide. But I just want to look at the last row before we move ahead. So if you have a child who's not a dependent or a relative who works out of district in a current statewide public teachers' union, you may now participate in negotiations, again, absent another conflict, and you may vote to ratify the contract. What does that conflict look like? Well, typically, this is the conflict that comes up most often. And that is that that member, relative in question, I should say, has heightened union involvement. So that would mean that they are a negotiations team in their own district, or they're building rep, or they're an officer in their local. That may prohibit you from being involved in negotiations and or voting. That may prohibit you from being involved in negotiations and or voting. Again, your board attorney should be the resource you go to to determine that.
Can I ask a question there?
Yeah.
So hypothetically speaking, if someone's relative was a teacher in a different district and they're endorsed by their union but didn't take any financial contributions, they can still vote on the contract? They can still vote to ratify?
Yeah, as of eighteen, right? And this is a change again from prior advice. I love the way this is, this is written because it's a little crazy, right? State, so the endorsement by a local or statewide union doesn't create a perceived future conflict unless a financial contribution is given and intended to influence the member.
Okay, thank you.
Who's deciding intent?
Yeah, right?
No, I just gave them to them because they're handsome, right? So, yeah, I, sometimes you scratch your head a little bit. But anyway, the, the current advice is that, that that person would not necessarily be conflicted.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Back to that slide, are we talking about like the entire United States if you have a relative in California? Like, it's still a conflict?
So it, you're mainly dealing with statewide unions.
In New Jersey.
Yep. So typically, that's the NJEA or UFT.
Thank you.
Yep. Doctrine of necessity, I don't know if this is anything that you guys have had to be involved with, but basically, this is in a situation where the board doesn't have enough unconflicted members to vote on a certain issue. The board members can, you know, declare publicly what their conflicts are. I believe they have to be posted for a period of time. And after that period of time elapses, the board can then sit down and, you know, fully participate in speaking on this matter and voting on this matter. Volunteerism. So. It's important to know that board members' activities in outside organizations aren't really in question. Board members have the right to be in the PTA, even be an officer, you know, ban parents, booster associations, et cetera. Board members are allowed to participate in that. It's probably a good idea, if there are issues that involve that organization that come before the board, that you excuse yourself from those discussions to, you know, to show that you're not going to be, you know, favoring that organization in any way. Again, your board attorney should give you advice on that. Board members do need to refrain from activities based on their degree of involvement with students or staff and the degree to which they have authority to give or receive directions to and from students and their staff and also in handling funds. So. We have a slide, the next slide, we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about what some of that might look like. The other thing is that board members who do volunteer in the schools should let the superintendent know they're going to be in the school. And then they should participate in that, whatever that planned activity might be. And then they should leave the school. That is not an opportunity for you to go around and check up on things. That's not why you're there. You're there for the volunteer activity and not alone. This slide we put together to kind of give a little bit of a checklist type guidance as to what circumstances might be an issue relative to volunteering in the schools. So you can see giving directions or orders to students or staff. If that's a no, right? Then you're probably fine. So anything in green there, if your answer matches that green, you're probably good to go. If it doesn't, that should be a question again for your board attorney. One of the big things that, that kind of begs the question here as to, you know, what can I do within the schools? Kind of emanates from people who are actively involved become, before they become board members. So, you know, if you think of your class parent or, you know, your PTA officer, they may be in the schools an awful lot for very legitimate reasons. But once you become a board member, again, you know, the optics are all different. So you, if, if you're there so much that you look like you could be a staff member, you're there way too much. And board members have to be really cognizant of that. So again, if your answers here match the green, then you're probably okay. If they deviated at all, that's a question for your board attorney. Interview committees, this is another example, if you will, of kind of the evolving advice that the SEC can give out to board members. In AO four dash twelve from 2012, relative to interview committees, it said that one or two board members could participate on interview committees if the administration, you know, initiates that, basically. Their role within that interview committee would be observation and assessment. And the CSA has the sole right to make recommendations to the board for hire. Just three years later, in A thirty-one dash fifteen, the SEC advises that board member involvement in interviews for positions other than that of superintendent is not encouraged. So in, in this one, I think they really bring the board members back to what their role is, and that is to hire a superintendent and, and let them run the district, including the personnel function and the hiring function. It does go on to say that if there are some circumstances that suggest that board members should or could be involved in interview committees, that they need to follow the guidance in AO four dash twelve. Exit interviews in, in a 2010 advisory were a clear no. It was deemed to be too much involvement in the day-to-day operation of the district. A couple of quick points to finish. We recommend developing a list of the conflicts that you may have and review it regularly. Every December, every May, there are new crops of teachers being released into the world from the universities. And before you know it, you may have a niece or a nephew somewhere who's a building rep or something of that nature that might affect your ability to negotiate or vote. So do, you know, just review your, your potential conflicts on a regular basis. Again, consult with your board attorney to identify real conflicts. And school board notes does release or recap, if you will, advisory opinions as are released by the school ethics commission. Closing note, again, from an advisory opinion, 2018, school officials must always be cognizant of their responsibility to protect the public trust, honor their obligation to serve the interests of the public and the board, and periodically reevaluate the existence of potential conflicts. So that is my last note. This is the set of cases that you can look at next time you're stuck in a house quarantining for some reason or another and you need something to do. They're all there for you. I will just stop sharing now and ask if there are any questions. Well, I thank you all for your attention. Thank you for your participation. Hope to see you all in person someday soon.
Thank you very much, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, man.
We look forward to seeing you again on the sixteenth.
Yes.
For both sides.
Yep, I'll be there. Thank you.
Have a good one.
Have a good night, folks. Let me make sure you are now, I think you're still a host, Bryce.
Okay, great.
Are you good?
All right, sounds good.
All right. Bye, guys.
Bye-bye. All right, um, oh, we're good. Didn't end the meeting. So, um, so with that, I'll just turn it over to Christina because we don't have a formal agenda for our Edgewater members, but they will be rejoining us again for our meeting on the twenty-third for our diversity training. And perhaps we can put together a few items to talk about at that meeting. So Christina.
Yes. Hello, Edgewater board members. I just need a motion to adjourn. Chala.
Greenspan.
Chal and Greenspan, great. All eyes?
All right.
All right. Thank you so much, everybody. Have a good evening.
Thank you to all.
Thank you for, thank you for hosting, Leonia.
And we will see you all again shortly.
Yes, thanks.
All right, we will now move along. So we actually have a public comment portion for tonight's meeting. It can be on any agenda items, questions concerned, praise on agenda items. I do ask that members of the public who do have a agenda, who would like to comment on an agenda item, please do not incorporate anything about the interviews that, that should be left to the decision for the board to make in close. So aside from, from that, I kindly ask that you just keep it to agenda items. So if there are any members of the public that wish to speak, please just use the raise your hand function. Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion to take us back into public or to the regular board?
Motion.
Motion Maria, the second, someone?
Second.
Second, Mary. Okay, um, we're now at board comments or student representative comments. Anybody has a comment to make? Okay. Seeing none. We do have a long meeting tonight, so I, so I understand the little motivation. I'm kidding. Okay, so now we are at the approval of our consent agenda items, which are identified by an asterix. I'm trying to figure out the best way to do it. If you have any comments, please let me know. But it's items twelve, thirteen, and twenty, I believe. Is there, if there's no, are there, is there a motion on it? Someone?
Motion.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second Maria.
Thank you for updating the minutes.
Oh, yep. Okay. Hearing no discussion, Rashawn, roll call, please.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Mrs. DeJesus?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Melman?
Yes.
Mr. Park?
Yes.
Mrs. Rockow?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilds?
Yes.
The eyes have a consent agenda items have been approved.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, next is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Bryce. Just, let's be a quick one. First of all, the Ginn Lee or Matt supervisor has finalized the plans for Smile, which is the summer math institute for Leonian Edgewater students. This is our third year, I believe. It's really done well. So registration opens up on March fifteenth. The website is updated, ready to go. So if you know anybody that's interested, please let, please go to the website. We've had kindergarten registration so far, and we're between seventy-five and eighty students, which is about what we usually have at this time of year. Parents can still go to the website and look at the registration papers that they need to sign up for kindergarten. If you're an ACS parent, there's a book fair run by the home and school association from now through March fourteenth, always good. And I spoke with Dave Sacco and April King, our administrative team at the middle school, and they set up three dates for the transition meetings for our, our students coming from either Edgewater or from the ACS school. It'll be in our update this week, but just to let you know now, March thirtieth is arising fifth graders from ACS. April thirteenth, arising sixth graders. April fourteenth, arising seventh graders. There'll be a video in advance that they can watch. They can submit questions in advance and, and Sacco and Miss King will answer those first and then address any new questions that come up that night. So we'll, we'll obviously publicize it a lot more. So that's March thirtieth, April thirteenth, and April fourteenth. And then the last thing I have is that about sixty students joined the in-person classes at ACS this week. That's second, third, fourth, and fifth grade. Spread out pretty much across the board. And then the first grade and the kindergarten students that want to come in every day will be starting on March twenty-second. We're, we've purchased the hotspots. We're just waiting for them to come in. So we're looking forward to it being a smooth start on March twenty-second. And that's all I have for tonight.
Okay. Rashawn, do you have a business administrative report?
No report this evening, Mr. President.
All right, good. We'll keep things moving. There's no hip reports either. We'll go right to committee reports. For the committee report for COVID nineteen reentry plan, basically just what Ed said, and I posted on the, in the president's report, information about the reentry plan. It's basically just what, exactly what we discussed. On February twenty-eighth, Ed and I had a town hall event, got close to six hundred views on YouTube, so that's pretty cool. Did pretty well. And we laid out some key information about the pre-K, K, and one pilot program and then possible changes for the other grades as well. And that can all be found. Detailed information of that can be found on our school district website. Just go under president's report. It'll be the first issue outlined there. But no changes other than what was said at the town hall. Education, have you met?
We're meeting right before the next March twenty-third meeting, so no update this week, but we'll have one for the next meeting.
Perfect. For finance and planning, I'll just run through a few things. It's, it's exactly as I posted on the president's report. Rashawn gave us the corrective action plan as promised on March first, and essentially, it's, all is going well. The goal is to make a standard operating procedure that's Q-SAC ready and unique to Leonia. And it's just gonna need a little bit more time on that. State aid figures came in. They are a lot better than we had anticipated. For those who remember, last year and the year and a half ago, we were all talking about how the state was cutting a tremendous amount from us. It was over a million dollars over ten years. Now we're expecting an increase of approximately thirty percent. It's four point six seven million dollars. So that's, that is positive. But there's some questions about how much of that we're actually going to be benefiting because the way the certified rate is calculated with Edgewater, we may now owe them money from the previous certified tuition rate. So we will, we will have to figure that out as time goes on. But Rashawn informed us about ways to resolve the, that, I guess, instability and how we calculate it. And there's two steps that we talked about. So the first is transitioning over to the NJ DOE budget software, which has already been done. And the second step that the financing and planning committee will talk about is creating a line item for tuition, creating a tuition account. We talked about the CARES Act, how we got five hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars in CARES Act money. And we'll likely go to improving air qual, improving air quality, learning loss program, mental health programs for teachers, students, and parents. But most funds will probably be going to the Chromebooks for grades three, seven, and ten, that cycle that we discussed. And just remember that federal guidelines do determine what we purchase, because if we purchase something that's not in those guidelines, we still owe that money back. So we have to make sure we do it correctly. We talked about the technology upgrade plan. The bids went out last week, or I guess two weeks ago now. The bids will open on March twenty-fourth virtually, so we should get results pretty quickly after that. And the bid packets will be sent to the board office, and then that information will be disseminated to all the board members. And the result, and then the results of that will be discussed in finance and planning. And then there'll be a vote. We'll ask the board to vote on it in April. Regarding LMS, there was just a slight plumbing issues with regards to the documents that land is provided, but I believe it's been cleared up now. And they'll be providing us with renderings for the fifth grade wing, what it'll look like. Because we are sending our fifth grade to a newly renovated wing, so that'll be really nice to show the community. And then we talked about the budget. So Rashawn will be sending the finance and planning committee a draft of the budget on the sixteenth. The committee will review the advertised budget and will move it to the board for approval on March twenty-third, and then it'll be sent to the county. Remember, this is not the budget that ultimately people will be paying. It's just the advertised budget. And Rashawn, I want to thank you. It's incredible how quick in advance you've been working on this and how it's going to give the board and the public a lot more time to digest it and to discuss it. And I thank you for, for your attention to detail and hard work on this. Thank you very much. And that is all for finance and planning. That was a mouthful. Community relations, you guys are up.
Okay, we have a meeting this coming up Monday evening, and we're going to be talking about the effective use of social media. This effect, effective and correct use of social media for the board. Um, I wanted to thank all of the candidates that applied and interviewed tonight because I think it shows just how strong in our community our level of volunteerism and service is. So that's just, you know, it's, I don't know if it's unique to Leonia, but it really feels like good to see so many people come out and really want to serve. It, it was great. And I wanted to also thank Mayor Ziegler because I heard that there was a very successful vaccination day, which I know that Dr. Bertolini also contributed to. So I thank him and all the volunteers for doing that. Again, an important component of our community. Again, important component of our community to kind of bond together, stay together, and help each other. So thanks for all that.
Thank you. Isaac for policy. Isaac, you're muted.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Yep, we didn't meet post committee the last week. And we talked about the, our district travel policy is six four seven one, which is by request of the, our PA's request. And it was, it came up on our, the corrective district of policy action plan. And so when we reviewed it and the, we did not found, we did not find any of the issue of that policy. And also, we are, keep continuing to reviewing our internet computer, computer-related policy as well. And also, Mary, I'm sorry, there, like, I couldn't respond back to you. We are going to review policy five one one one, which is, talk about the residency enrollment in our district. So probably next meeting, we are going to talk about this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Isaac, and I apologize during the meeting. I didn't realize, so I set up the meeting for the policy committee, and I had class on Zoom, so I exited out of the meeting early, and it closed the meeting for everybody, so I apologize to the policy committee for cutting the meeting short.
Okay, that's fine.
Um, next is student representatives. You guys have anything else? Yep, Chris.
Um, so I know this may be a little bit out of the blue, but I kind of just thought about this like two hours ago when I was watching the candidates be interviewed. And one of the questions was like, how could you help? Or what class would you add? And so I think two of them, I don't remember which ones, brought up a good point of like life skills, like, like how to do your taxes, how to do a mortgage, right? And so these are things like I don't really know how to do, but I thought would be useful. And this may not be like enough to fit into a whole class, so maybe you could do like one half the year, like one semester is like public speaking and interviewing or something like that. And then the next half is just life skills, like paying taxes and stuff like that. It's just an idea.
Thank you, Chris. I think it's a great idea, and perhaps the education committee can discuss, review what we have and see in ways maybe perhaps we can improve if that's there, but absolutely. All right, are there other student comments? Any other board comments? If not, we will move to our second public comment. We're already, we're moving quite quickly. But that's a good thing because we have a lot to discuss in close session. Is there a motion to take us into the next public, the second public comment of tonight's meeting?
Motion.
Which Maria, is there a second? Second, Anna, all in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? Great, hearing none. If there's any member of the public that wishes to speak, please just use the raise your hand function. It can be on any item, but again, I please ask that it's not a comment on any of the applicants who interviewed this this afternoon. Thank you. Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to take us back into the regular board meeting? Isaac, is there a second, Maria? All in favor? Hi. You pose any abstentions? Great. Any board comments?
I have a legislative committee comment, a really fast one.
Oh, yeah, please, please.
Christine and I both attended the legislative committee meeting on Saturday morning. I don't know, if you geek out on this kind of stuff like she and I do, it's really interesting to listen to. One of and when schools reopen for in-person, whether to retain the digital learning platform. So there's a lot of discussion going on about that. You know, there's a lot of back and forth. In-person is better, but digital learning opens up more opportunities, and plus you have the bad weather thing, so you can still have school. So there's a lot of discussion. I don't know if it'll actually go away. I think that they, I have, I don't know how Christina felt about the conversation, but I have a feeling that it's going to be retained somehow. So, I don't know. But of course, you know, funding is always attached to these kinds of things, too. They also talked about state testing, and they don't know if the, if they did state testing, how accurate the results would be statewide because a lot of districts have been affected by COVID and the pandemic very unevenly. And they don't know if it's really going to be an accurate view of what the assessment is for the, for this past year. So those were my two. I don't know if Christina had something to add, too.
No, I think just, I guess, supporting vaccines for staff. To, to add to what Mary was saying, they were saying that, that the, the new normal might be hybrid, might indeed be hybrid, especially if, if, if it's better for the kids. Although, as Mary's saying, is it, is it going to be an unfunded mandate? We don't know about that yet. And the one other, which is that school boards is very adamantly against recent legislation, which would not allow enforcement officers to reach out to parents if their kids got, were found in possession of illegal substances. The intention was to give a kid another chance, but we're talking about minors and police officers, I think, school administrators, and certainly the school boards itself, very much against that particular piece of legislation. And I think that's going to get fixed pretty quickly.
Okay, thank you very much, it's both of you. I see Dan and Maria both unmuted, so I'll go to Dan and then Maria.
Thank you. Bryce, and this is really through to, to Dr. Bertolini. I mean, just, I'm sure it's happening, but just regarding what the hotspots that are being implemented for K and first grade, just please implore, just make sure that Tafari and the team are doing everything they can to, to test the equipment before it's implemented, just to make sure it's operational, so we don't run into similar issues with September.
Yeah.
Hey, now, don't unmute yourself, you're speaking to my, my speaker.
Okay.
According, we're sitting next to, that's why we have masks on, but sometimes our voices. Yes, right now, we have signed the contract. Rashawn did it today or yesterday, and we're waiting for them, we'll test them out next week. But it's just, it's not just Dan for the K and one, it's also for the other students that are in the building, second, third, fourth, and fifth. So we're hoping that everything is ready for the twenty-second. That's our plan, and we're right on target right now. Hopefully, I can say next meeting that it worked well, it's the twenty-third, so.
The order will be shipped to us tomorrow, Dr. Bertolini. I confirmed that with T-Mobile this afternoon.
Perfect, thank you, Rashawn. So we're, we're going to test it next week, Dan.
Very good, thank you very much.
Maria.
Thanks. I just wanted to recognize the efforts of the ACS Home and School Association. They've done a great job with literacy, recently bringing in some great speakers to the elementary school, and now with the virtual book fair, there was a pajama night, an opportunity for parents to participate as mystery readers. And I know that, you know, my family and I and many other families in town really appreciated that opportunity to have that, you know, that bit of school spirit, you know, where of course, for obvious reasons, we haven't been able to have, you know, in-person events and things like that that we did in previous years, but just wanted to recognize their efforts.
Thank you very much. Any other members? Kim and then Maria.
I just wanted to see if Dr. Bertolini or whoever was kind of leading the cause on this. The recreation department put forth their summer camp this week, and I know that the ACS mini camp is held, you know, typically in ACS. I was wondering if the, if you had considered whether they would be able to have the mini camp there, kind of the timeline for that and when the public might be notified about that.
Yeah, I, I spoke to Sean Crackow, who's in charge of the rec now, took over from Barbara Davidson. We had a good conversation. I told him to, to, I wasn't sure exactly how I could answer that because at this point, we don't know what it's going to be like in the summertime. But he said if we talked about it again in April, I'd be able to give him an answer, and he, that's enough time for him to organize it. So we certainly want to help the rec department. We want to make sure that it's safe. But we're going to communicate again in April to finalize our decisions. Hold for us, the record for, for the school district. But the bottom line is, we'd like to, we'd like for the rec department to use our facilities in a safe manner. But as we're moving along, we're hoping it can happen.
Um, Nora.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to say really quickly that I thought it was great tonight that we had six candidates interviewing for the open position. In most elections, we don't even have six candidates running, so I just wanted to commend everyone who kind of threw their hat in the ring. And also just say that I hope that for any, you know, all of you that are interested in joining the board, that, you know, every November, there's election, an election, and I hope you stay interested, right? Because I think it's great to have so many people in the process.
Absolutely, I second that. Other board comments, anybody? Seeing none, I just had two, two comments to make. So the first is, I want to thank the capital budget committee of the municipality that took part in their meeting yesterday. I've been a member, I think, for the last three years on that. And to thank Arthur Zaid individually, he's the chairman, and he has been for the last like eight years on that committee, and has done a great job leading that committee. So just wanted to take time to recognize that. And I believe there will be minutes coming forward shortly, and I will share them with the board, just that they're up to date on that. The other thing is, I, I don't think it's a, I don't think it's really news to anybody, but it, because it's been well, well-known for a while now that there's been a rise in violence against members of our Asian community and across the United States. And I think the Board of Education for our next meeting should have a resolution addressing this, just condemning it and showing our support for members of our Asian community, especially because they make a significant portion of our student population. So be happy to work with all board members to, to address this. And then also, perhaps we can look into maybe an assembly or some type of event that can address this issue, but all these issues at large. And certainly, we can discuss this at our next diversity meeting when, if anyone from our diversity committee, from members of the public is listening, our advisory committee, we will be setting up a meeting shortly for that. So just wanted to address those two things. All right, seeing no other board comments, is there a motion to take us into executive session or closed session, or executive session? Vic, actually, does it matter if it's closed or executive, which one we're defining it as? I just want to make sure.
No, they're just used interchangeably, those two terms. It's, it's technically, everyone calls it executive session or closed session, but I think technically, it's the part that's closed to the public. So I prefer the term closed, but either one is fine.
Then we'll go with what you prefer. All right, is there a motion to take us into closed session?
Crackow?
Yeah, I like.
Oh, yeah, I, I actually like that, that you guys use your last names in Edgewater. It's supposed to just I, that way you know exactly who said it. And the first, the first person you said, I was like, wait, what? And then I realized they were using last names. I like that, perhaps we can get into the, to the swing of that.
Because we never know who's.
Yeah, oftentimes, I never know who's, who's raising their hand, so, okay. Who would like to second that?
Me.
There you go. It's going to take me a while to get into the habit of that, but I like that. Okay, all in favor? You don't have to say your last name. Opposed, abstentions? Great. Be resolved in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, that the Leonia Board of Education shall conduct a closed executive session pursuant to the exceptions prescribed in NJ SA ten colon four dash twelve for the purpose of discussing, well, it's just the candidates who have applied. I can take that out. The approximate time will be, I can't really give a great approximation, but I would say an hour, an hour, I don't know, an hour and a half to be safe, I don't know. Maybe not, I don't know, I really don't know. The minutes of the executive session will be released when the need for confidentiality no longer applies. Thank you to all the members of the public who've joined and to the candidates who will notify you this evening. Sorry for the late phone call, I typically don't do that, but I will call you later.
Second.
Maria. I should do a roll call for this, or?
I'll just see, are there any other nominations?
Are there, are there, are there any other nominations? Okay, seeing none. Now, can I just do, all in favor?
You have to do a roll call for this one.
All right, Rashawn, roll call, please.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Mrs. DeJesus? Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Melman?
Yes.
Mr. Park?
Yes.
Mrs. Rackow? Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wildes?
Yes.
Motion carries to appoint Dami Choi to the Leonia Board of Education. Our vote tally was as follows. Nine yeas, zero abstentions, zero knees.
So although she can't see, I'll just formally just say congratulations, Dami, but I will, I will call all the candidates and inform them of the board's decision. And because of the consent agendas, great efficiency, we are, only have one last thing to do, and that is to adjourn for tonight. So is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thompson, second, Park? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, with the record show, the Board of Education's meeting concluded at nine forty-four P.M. Have a wonderful evening, everybody, and I'll talk to you guys soon.
Thank you. Thank you, Ron and Vic also.